Called it to be County Board of Supervisors in this session for the Monday, April 11th, 2022 meeting. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are no indications on Zoom.
There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 4th.
Motion approved as presented.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we go to consent items. Do we want to go through all of them individually and then make a motion? Or do we just want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A, B, and C.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent items A, B, and C. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we go to procurement procedures. Proof of publication.
Motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we go to receipt of quotes to furnish and apply pavement markings. Paint for Dubuque County secondary roads.
Guessing that's where the auditor went.
Our auditor left.
Dramatic entrance does that all the time.
Do we have Anthony on Zoom? Do we have Anthony?
A blast.
Yes, good morning. I'm here.
Morning.
All right, good morning, everybody. You have pavement markings coming up first. First bid is from Farner Asphalt Sealers. And the bid price is $207,264. That's $207,264. The second bid is from Iowa Plains Signing Incorporated. That bid price is $243,280. That's $243,280. The third is from Vogel Traffic Services. That bid is $178,630. That's $178,630. The next pavement marking bid is from Diamond Vogel Incorporated. That bid is $158,335.60. That's $158,335.60. And that completes the bids for the pavement marking paint.
I'll make a motion to receive the bids and refer those to the county engineer for his recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to receive the bids and forward to the county engineer for his termination. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Next we have the receipt of quotes, bridge replacement on Hammerand Road, Project L-B23, parentheses, 1-73-31. Kevin?
Good morning. We have two bids for this project. The first is from Jim Schroeder Construction Incorporated. Probably butchered that name. And that bid is $579,565.75. That's $579,565.75. The second bid is from Taylor Construction. That bid is $585,984. $585,984.20. That's $585,984.20. And that completes the bids.
Make a motion to receive and file the bids, sending them to the county engineer for further advice.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to receive the bids and forward to the county engineer for the bridge replacement on Hammerand Road. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we have a notice to bidders, the bridge replacement on Conrad Lane, Project L-B23, parentheses, 04-73-31. Those bids have to be in by April 29th, 3:00 PM on April 29th. It will be open May 2nd at 9:00 AM.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice to bidders.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the notice to bidders for the bridge replacement on Conrad Lane. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we have several zoning cases. Start with proof of publication for the public hearing. To us posted in Telegraph Herald Cascade Pioneer.
I'll make a motion to approve the proof of publication for the public hearings.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Start with zoning case ZC, hash mark, 03-07-22, Paul and Jean Dytemeyer, A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential. Tammy?
Okay, good morning, everybody. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential, two acres, to allow for the construction of a new home to replace the old farm home to continue and to assist in the family farming operation. This property is located 2.02 miles east of the city of Worthington along K&amp;K Road and is legally described as lot one of the northwest of the Northwest, Section 34, T-88 North, R2W Dodge Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Paul and Jean Dytemeyer. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property, and four notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Worthington was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7, may apply to this case. So this is an existing lot that had a home on it at one time, and now they are moving off of their home site so that they're, one of their children can move in and, and continue to help them with the farming operation, and they're going to place a home out here now. That's their intention. It was voted seven to zero in favor for the zoning board.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the board in chambers regarding this? Propose. But did, did you want to speak to the board, Paul, or? Okay, just go up to the podium.
Come here. Well, you have to put in, say your name and your address and then tell them, okay? Paul Dytemeyer, 29599 East Worthington Road. Just lived down the road from this land here, and my boy wants to take over farming, and I'm getting tired of milking, so I says, I want to retire up there and help him out yet when he needs it for field work.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else that wishes to address the board of chambers? Do we have anyone on Zoom, Kevin?
We do not.
Motion to close public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here is, next we'll go to zoning case 03-08-22, State of Iowa, A1 Agricultural to A, R2 Single Family Residential.
Okay. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential, two acres to be allowed to sell the existing home and the garage. This property is located 0.058 miles south of the city of Dubuque along Old Devon Pole Road and is legally described as Lot 2 of Orwork Farms, Addition, Section 13, T-88 North, R2E, Table Mountain Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by the state of Iowa. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the northwest, B1 Business to the northwest, C1 Conservancy to the north, and the east and west, R2 Single Family Residential to the southwest and east, R3 Single Family Residential to the northwest, and 1 Industrial to the west. The R2 Single Family Residential to the south, the R3 Single Family Residential to the northwest was to allow for a single-family home subdivision. The M1 Industrial to the west on zoning case number 040391 was to rezone 17 acres to be allowed for wood export business and some other compatible industrial use. There was one rezoning case attached to this property, and that was on zoning case number 0209 of 18, and that was to allow for the Iowa Department of Transportation Maintenance Garage Facility. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Four notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Dubuque, or was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 135, Objective 5.2, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7, may apply to this case. So this is a case where they had to rezone in the past to A1 to be able to, it was all zoned residential, to be able to get the use for the state garage, and now they have come up with, they're not keeping the house in this area, so it was always used as a residential farm property. They're reverting that back so that they can sell this, because at one time, this is a very old home. They had considered possibly even tearing the house down, and they decided not to do that because it's very historic. So they've kept that into play. And again, this was a seven to zero in favor vote.
So the state of Iowa where the garage just now used to be agricultural?
Yeah. No, no.
It used to be residential, R2, all around it, and then they switched it to A1 to?
So they could, so they could meet the, the guidelines to build that facility.
Okay.
And so they did that. That would have been done back in 18, and now they didn't really know at the time what they were going to do with this house and this property, and now they've, they've decided to not tear the house down, and to do that, they need to rezone that back to our residential use to be able to sell it off. So the intention is to sell that now.
Yeah, I have no problem with this case. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember the, the switch from R2 to A1 and why the, why we'd have to do that in order to put up a maintenance shed.
Yeah, it was, it was before I was doing that, and so I can't give you the great, I mean, I didn't pick up the details of it, but it had to be done for whatever purposes and how they needed to do it, and I asked them to do that that time, and so that's why they want to convert it back now.
I would just say also, just for general purposes, I attended the zoning meeting that evening. I think that's clear in the record, but Sam Shea and another gentleman from the DOT were with us on Zoom.
Yes, they were.
The DOT was present to answer questions, to walk through everything, so.
Yeah. And then, you know, everybody was kind of excited that they weren't tearing down the old house.
That's a, it's an old rock house.
It's an old stone home. Yes, it is.
A motion to open the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here in public hearing, do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do not.
Motion to close public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 We'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement, this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes in the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to, up the amendments. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we'll go to zoning case 030922, David and Susan Albrecht and Dylan Kutch, A1 Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential. Tammy?
Okay. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential, 1.11 acres to allow for the construction of a new home. This property is located 0.19 miles north of the city of Cheryl along Circle Ridge Road and is legally described as Lot 2 of 1 of 1 in the northeast of the northeast, Section 13, T-90 North, R1E Jefferson Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by David and Susan Albrecht. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and the west, A2 Agricultural Residential to the northeast, R1 Rural Residential to the north, R2 Single Family Residential to the north and the south. The A2 Agricultural Residential to the northeast on zoning case number 0101 of 16 was to allow for a home to be sold to, to the daughter and her son, who currently live in a home in our partnership with a farming operation. The R1 Rural Residential on zoning case number 9,018 of 80 and zoning case number 9,011 of 76 to the north of this property were for the purposes of building single-family homes, and the R2 Single Family Residential to the south of this case on zoning case number 1248 of 96, and to the north on zoning case number 0202 of 15 of this property were also for the purposes of building single-family homes. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Seven notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Cheryl was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7, may apply to this case. This was in favor again by the zoning board, seven to zero. So what this is, is this young couple is moving next door to their parents just outside of Cheryl, and their, their neighbor was willing to sell them off a little lot, and that's what this lot is creating for. It's for a single-family home. It's not for agricultural purposes. It's, it's strictly just for a single-family home just outside of the city limits of Cheryl.
Is this also seven to one, seven to zero?
Seven to zero, yeah. Ms. Caitlin did have a few questions about why it wasn't A2, and, and we addressed that and explained. And it was also, why was it not zoned R1? And it's because of the setbacks. The R2 fits what they need without trying to get variances once they, if they do get approved to put a home in there. The R1 setbacks are further back.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're now in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding this application? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online?
Uh, this is Dave Schneider, if I can speak.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Working with Mr. Kutch and the Albrechts to basically satisfy the agreement they have to purchase that one acre, for Dylan to purchase that one acre next to his parents. Tammy did an outstanding job of explaining it. The main reason for the R2 is he's selling him one acre, and the, the width of it just is not quite wide enough to meet the, uh, R1 lot width, but the R2, it does work fine for the R2. It meets, it exceeds its 120-foot minimum lot width. So that's really the main reason for rezoning to the R2, and pretty much everything that we do anymore in the county is, is consistent with the R2 just because it allows these property owners more flexibility on their lots over the R1. Um, yeah, I really don't have any more information. He's, again, like Tammy had indicated, he's basically looking to purchase property adjacent to his parents there.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone have questions?
Nope. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to approve the rezoning.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to suspend the requirement, this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next we'll go to zoning case 03-10-22, Thomas J. Buddy Revocable Family Trust, A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential, 15.83 acres to allow them to separate the existing farm home and buildings so they're able to sell them. This property is located 1.97 miles north of the city of Holy Cross along Tollgate Road, and is legally described as the northwest of the southeast and the northeast of the southeast lying west of County Road in, all in Section 5, T-90 North, R1W Concord Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Thomas, Thomas J. Buddy Revocable Family Trust. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and the west. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property, and there are no special use permits attached to the property. Five notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Holy Cross was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7, may apply to this case. So this is a case that he's selling, starting to sell off some of his property. He's retiring, and he does have someone currently living in here that I believe is going to be the person purchasing this property. They would be maintaining all of the existing buildings, so that's why this lot size is a little bigger than normal. Also, they will own the entryway in, as you can see on that potential look at that. So this was voted in favor by the zoning board, seven to zero.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are now in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers that wishes to address the board regarding this application? Um, no one in chambers. Do we have anyone online?
Uh, again, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Um, yeah, working with Tom. He has a, a younger fellow that's, I believe, he does have, uh, ag exempt or fills out a Schedule F. He has farmed, he does farm, and basically looking to operate his farm off of this existing building site. That's why we're survey, surveying around all the buildings and which he intends to occupy. Obviously, it's, it's A2 because it doesn't meet the maximum or the, the 35 acres, so just kind of working through a process. He's, Mr. Buddy plans on continuing to rent out the, the crop ground around it.
Thank you, Dave.
Motion to close public hearing.
I will second that.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement, that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And then you get, aye.
I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next we'll go to zoning case 03-11-22, JJS Real Estate LLC and Jeffrey and Jamie Hammerand and Scott Breiner, A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential. Tammy?
Okay. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agriculture to A2 Agricultural Residential, 1.919 acres to allow for the construction of a new home to replace an old farm home that has been torn down. This property is located 1.199 miles northwest of the city of Balltown along Ridge Road and is legally described as Lot 2 in the southwest of Section 31, T-91 North, R1E Jefferson Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by JJS Real Estate LLC. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and west, A2 Agricultural Residential to the south. The A2 Agricultural Residential to the south was on zoning case number 0520 of 18. That was to allow for the construction of one home only. And the A2 Agriculture to the south on BA Case Number 072615 and BA Case Number 072715 was to allow for single-family dwellings on agriculture ground unsuitable for farming. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Balltown was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7, may apply to this case. So this is a young family coming out to build a house where there was an old farmhouse at one time. They are in an LLC. They are farming this land, and they are pin, they will eventually be buying out their partner and intend to have, in, own the whole area and farm the whole area.
Motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are now in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding this application? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online?
Uh, again, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Uh, yeah, basically working with the Hammerands. They're getting ready to build this house, hopefully this spring. Um, and obviously the zoning, the rezoning of it necessary because the, they're, the Hammerands are going to build on this property, but they've got one other partner, um, and ultimately need to have this parcel in their own name for the, the mortgage on it, um, as they, you know, build in this area and, and with the intent of kind of occupying and managing that farm from there.
Thank you, Dave. They're not, they're not building where the old house was, though, are they?
No, they're pulling the house a little, the, the old house was kind of up in the area of the existing farm buildings to the nor, slightly north of where this parcel is that they're going to build now.
Okay.
Tammy, what was the vote?
That was a seven to zero in favor.
Motion to close public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 A motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for pass- on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
I have a motion, the second, to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and the portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I will second that.
I have a motion, the second, that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have zoning case 03-12-22, Timothy Kendrick Trust and Kirby Kendrick, A1 Agricultural to PC Plan Complex. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting a zone from A1 Agriculture to the PC Plan Complex, 10 acres, to be allowed to get an existing campground with six cement pads and two cabins into compliance with the Dubuque County Health and Dubuque County zoning. This property is located 3.17 miles northwest of the city of Luxembourg along Bourne Lane and is legally described as the east half or east quarter of the northwest of the northwest and the south half of the northeast of the northwest and the north half of the northeast of the northwest lying west on Bourne Lane and the southeast of the northwest, Section 6, T90 North, R2W Liberty Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Timothy Kendrick Revocable Trust. The zoning in the area includes A1 Agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west, and it is adjacent to both Delaware and Clayton Counties. The property owners had started construction of a new cabin home when they built, when they came in to request a septic permit. It was discovered they had not applied for the building permit. When they requested to apply for the building permit, it was determined that they had developed several camping sites as well as several structures, including pavilions and storage sheds, that had not been permitted. It was also determined that the A1 Agricultural zoning property was being used for a multiuses for the family, which resulted in having to request to a PC Plan Complex. The PC Plan Complex would contain six cement pads, camping pads, that have electricity, the cabin, a pavilion, a fire pit, and a seating area and an existing cabin, and a kitchen shed. Some of the property is in, was determined to be in the floodplain, but has since been determined by the Idaho Department of Natural Resources that none of the structures or campsites are located within the floodplain. There is one previous rezoning case attached to this property and that was on zoning case number 0511 of 21. The case originally went to the zoning commission on May 18th of 2021. The zoning commission tabled the case, waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers' determination of what, if anything, was in the floodplain. It was determined by the Idaho Department of Natural Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers that none of the structures or cement pads were in the floodplain. Mr. Kendrick, along with David Meyer from the Barrington Group, came to back to ask the case to go back to the zoning commission for review again. The zoning commission heard the case again on January of 18 of 2022. The commission had much discussion about the application that night and whether or not the application was complete application and if it had been provided enough information for the zoning commission to determine if the case should be approved or denied. The zoning commission did not vote on the motion not to, did vote on a motion to approve that ended up three to three vote. There was one member absent that night. Three of the board members felt that the application was completed and they were in favor of PC being approved. Three other board members felt that the case did not provide a complete application to be able to determine if this should be a PC. Mr. Kendrick requested that this, that they came in front of the Board of Supervisors for their decision. On January 20th of 22, the zoning office received an updated application from the Kendricks, providing additional information on the original application. That was sent to Dubuque County Board of Supervisors where it was denied. The supervisors recommended that Mr. Kendrick reapply with a complete application to the zoning commission for a new case review. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Six rezoning notifications were sent to the property owners and there was no city notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 12, Plan Use 180, Objective 6.5 and 9.1, and Chapter 11, Watershed Management, Page 163, Objective 1.3 and 3.4, and Chapter 9, Agricultural Natural Resources, Page 135, Objective 7.1 and 7.2 may apply to this case. This was voted on six to one in favor and Ms. Caitlin voted against it. So I don't know if you have more questions for me. And Supervisor McDonough was in that meeting and so I don't know if you have more questions for me or if you just want to open it up to the public hearing or if there's something else I can do.
I have no further questions.
Motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
I have a motion, the second, to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 We are in public hearing. Anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding this case? Go ahead, Jerry.
Jerry Segworth, 2298 Segworth Lane, Holy Cross, Iowa. I'm on the zoning board as you were. We went a year ago or a year ago, whatever, when we started this whole process, when these poor guys started this whole process, it was just kind of, they didn't know where, they didn't understand our rules and that was kind of a struggle to work through that. But they, I feel that, that they had answered every question, every hoop we threw up for them. They jumped through it. They answered all their questions and, and the office has been working well with them. And I just think that, that we need to refine some of our, some of our applications. And actually, one of the, Dave George, one of our commission members came up with a halfway decent, he worked on it and come up with a little better application for this because it's kind of a, our application's kind of a catch-all thing and this would get it more defined so that when people like Mr. Kendrick come in with something, they know exactly how to go about it rather than having to come here and then go and then come here and then go. You know, we tied up a lot of their time and because, you know, we've done very few of these ever. And, you know, it's a learning process. And actually, we had two of them last year. One was the, was the nuns. And as it turned out, Kendricks had done everything that the nuns had done. And then all of a sudden, we threw up a whole bunch more stuff that they had to figure out and they did it. They did what they were told. And so I just, I feel bad. I've taken time out of my day to come down to speak my piece because I feel bad how it worked out for them, getting drug out this long. But, you know, when we did, when we did six to, six to one to vote on it, Harley, you had asked, you know, that you wanted us to see it again and we saw it again. They answered all of our questions. And so I hope you pass it for these people today so they can get on with their life.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
David Meyer, Barrington Group, 105 West Main, Manchester, Iowa. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have anything.
I do not.
Okay.
None of those gentlemen?
Thank you.
I have nothing. Anyone else wish to address the board regarding this? If anyone on Zoom?
Is Catherine Caitlin on Zoom? Can't see the participants.
And I'm just gonna, if I may, add on to Jerry's comments a little bit there, just on the fact that we have discovered some flaws in the PC plan. And the intention for our office is to go back, meet with the zoning board and, and make it, get this fixed so that this doesn't happen again. We've had 17 PC Plan complexes in the history of the county and most of those were done in the 70s and, and early 80s. So in looking at it, we can see there's some flaws in this and then our intention is, is a, my intention as the director is to get that fixed.
Thank you. And a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, to close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
We devote on closing the public hearing, I believe.
All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Yes, I do have discussion among my colleagues about this case. I understand that the zoning board is very frustrated with this case. It's been many months. Mr. Kendrick is here present and I know that you're very frustrated and you have done everything that our zoning office, I believe, has asked you to do. But I believe the zoning board is without legal leadership on this. We don't have legal advice that they need to step through this. The application itself and the ordinance itself states with specifics exactly what zoning is intended to do. It is all set forth there. In fact, it's a very, a very detailed zoning ordinance. The ordinance ran afoul here because we didn't follow the procedure. We never actually followed the zoning ordinance for Plan Complex from beginning to end. We, we didn't do that. And when we requested legal help, I don't think legal help, I disagree with the county attorney on this.
I was just gonna.
Right. We, we again, didn't go back and get it all done. So here we are with a situation that I would say to my, my, my colleagues. This is now a roadmap for everyone in the county who owns enough property to build a second home on 10 acres that's zone A1. What we've inadvertently done is created a situation where you don't have to follow the zoning. You just say, oh, now I'm a planned complex. And to prove you're a planned complex, we've not made these folks complete the zoning ordinance from beginning to end. We've said, close enough, that's fine. There's no written analysis of, from the commission to the board of supervisors. It is very detailed in this ordinance. And, and what we have to do in ordinances is apply them uniformly. This could open, really, truly, we could see multiples of these. Everyone, I mean, I know many people who have more than 10 acres and they wouldn't mind a second house, right? That's the problem.
I respectfully disagree with that. And County Attorney May was present that evening and he advised our board that they had followed what he felt was the protocol for this and I do, and I, and I understand that.
What Attorney May said is that the procedure was not followed to get to this point. And Catherine Caitlin, also a licensed practicing attorney, also indicated that the procedure was not followed. And she emailed Mr. May in advance of the meeting at length detailing to the county attorney, giving the county attorney legal advice to follow, that the procedure hadn't been followed. So we, we are here with deficiencies in process and I guess what, that's what we have to evaluate is anytime we find one of our neighbors who has created a great playground, and I don't begrudge you that, Mr. Kendrick, I hope someday I get invited up to play, beautiful spot. But I know people who are going to look at this and say, ask for forgiveness later. Do what you need to do to get your property up in the way you want to recreate at it. And then if zoning comes, you're a planned complex. There are some things inside the ordinance that state that sub, paragraph 6, sub C, in consideration, there must be consideration made of the best interest of the general public. That sub D, this will actually benefit, the public will benefit because of increased accommodations and aesthetic qualities. This is a private lane to a private 10 acres with more than one home structure and tremendous recreational facilities, outdoor kitchens, again, wonderful things, hope I get to visit someday. But there's no determination that's been made that what they've done meets any kind of public purpose, right? It is not a public purpose, it's a private purpose. The sisters that you go back to who own a candy shop, they're the caramel nuns, okay? And I think, you know, Tammy, when you look at that, we all know those sisters. They live a recrusive life, a contemplative life. Their rezoning was for them to create more retreat homes, right? And more a front pacing, facing community customer service center home where they would do candy sales. That's a planned complex. That's a greater mission. I don't know that you want to argue with the nuns whether or not that type of thing is a public purpose, right? I think we've all had Trappstein caramels. But that's how I see these two being differently. If another, another sister's house or another planned retreat purpose wants to come forward, different than many other landowners who could duplicate what we have here and be planned complex. We've taken a situation and we have pounded a square into a red. You've got to fit here, we've got to fit here. This is what you have to be. And I disagree with that process. In zoning, the process is critically important so that we are fair. In response to the difficulties we've had processing this, we have decided that the zoning ordinance must go. We must change the zoning ordinance. And it's been my position all along, obviously extensive comments that night at the meeting, that the process hasn't been done in this case. There is frustration about the length of time, but we don't have legal leadership from the county attorney helping us get through this to a conclusion that we can all stand behind. That is my conclusion. And so I am voting no on this and.
And, and if I may, the, the, the solution for the public entity of this is the Kendricks came across and the Kendricks already do up in Clayton County, is it or Delaware? Where are you at with your logging business? I'm sorry. Okay. So they already do tours of their facility for the schools. So they went to the Colesburg School Districts and they have offered tours of the property to educate, educate students on tree management, forestry, and that's how they decided when they were listening to the zoning board members as well as the supervisors on, okay, you know, how do we make this a public entity? What, what can we do to serve the public? And that is the solution that they came up with in the new application process.
That actually isn't what is in the new application that's here. But, but I want to say again, back to process and back to, in zoning, when you follow the process, you're less likely to get sued, right? You follow the process, you do what the zoning ordinance says, and that's how we keep it all straight and online. We follow what the zoning ordinance is every time. That's what we do. Here, there's a sub, paragraph B, the commission, zoning commission, will prepare a written analysis. We've never received that. So whatever they've told you orally, this commission has never done a written analysis of all of the things that were supposed to be questioned and answered to bring to us. And then in the application itself, this is, I think, from the gentleman seated next to Mr. Kendrick. The consideration that this area is in the best interest of the public, this proposed development is more beneficial as being classified as a planned complex district because two dwellings located within the same 40-acre tract. That's the public, it's good for the public because it's a zoning violation. That doesn't make it good for the public. That makes it something we have to go back and get, and get right. So that isn't a public purpose that there's two buildings on the property. That's directly in the, the application that was submitted this time, so.
The supervisor, should the board be so inclined? We do have a person named Samantha with their hand up on Zoom.
She could have spoke during the public hearing. She's the chair of the board.
Just making you aware.
Jerry, we're meeting you on, if you want to hear from the person. I have no further comments, no.
Do we need to go back and open? I'll let the person speak. Samantha?
Yes, this is Samantha Boyce, 20877 Ridge Road, Cheryl, Iowa, 52073. I am the chair of the Dubuque County Zoning Board and I just wanted to add some content to the discussion as far as the process and the concerns in the process and as well as the written analysis. So as far as the process goes, I was able to meet with our county attorney to get legal, legal opinions on the process as it's currently written and how we have conducted ourselves. That meeting was done in February, just to confirm that, you know, out of abundance and concern that we are, to the best of our ability. abundance and concern that we are, to the best of our ability, following our process. Um, I do believe that his opinion and advice was delivered, um, and taken and discussed by the zoning commission. I also believe as far as the written analysis, it was agreed that that is archaic in its, um, in its, uh, writing and it, and how it's written, it is, they shall, um, they shall present, which potentially could mean that, um, it's not necessary. On top of a written analysis, I do believe as the, uh, chairperson of the board that, um, outside of our, our zoning commission meetings where we are to deliberate, have this discussion where it is documented, it is recorded, um, we are providing our written analysis. And, and I have given multiple verbal, verbal analysis of, of my findings, of my review, um, if, and, and that as discussed with the county attorney, um, in, in length was adequate to how the process is written. So understanding that we have the opportunity for continuous improvement within our ordinance, I think that we have done our diligence. I think that there's always opportunities to, um, to improve. And when we talk about how the ordinance was written in 1950s, 1960s, applied through the 70s, and has not changed since. There is a great effort, um, from the commission to improve that. Now, again, stating the time and the extensive questions, the analysis, the review that the board has taken, um, with discussion with the county attorney, um, grateful for that opportunity. He has, um, given me his opinion in order to make the decisions that I believe we've made today. So I just wanted to give that content and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Samantha.
This is Catherine Caitlin. I, I would like permission to speak as well if I could.
Supervisor, as we apparently do have another member in addition to Ms. Caitlin from the zoning commission on the Zoom call as well. So this will be up to you, Chair Potoff, if you would care to hear from every member of the zoning board this morning.
Catherine Caitlin is an attorney. She's critical to this case. Her legal analysis has been given to the county for free pro bono on this case numerous times.
Catherine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Oh, good. I tried to unmute. I'm sorry, I tried to unmute before in the public hearing and it wouldn't let me unmute. So I, I apologize. I, I just want to say that, um, I mean, I agree with what Ann said, we did not follow the process. The county attorney agreed that night that we did not follow the process. And I take exception to the, to Sam saying that she represents all of our views with her verbal comments. Uh, she doesn't represent mine at all. And, um, yeah, this is a mess and I, I feel like we're doing very bad precedent here, very bad precedent. And I, I am discouraged that we, we spend all this time doing ordinances that we don't get paid for and, and then we ignore them. And that's exactly what's happened in this case. And, you know, um, I guess I just wanted to say that I don't, I don't think we followed the process. I have lots and lots of questions that I wanted to have answered. I don't think there's a purpose that complies with the ordinance in any way, shape or form. And with all respect to Sam, she doesn't represent my views at all. We never even got to that point in that last meeting that we had. So I just wanted to add that. And, um, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you for letting me speak out outside of public comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine. David? Dave George, is it?
So we do have hands raised. David George and Samantha again as well.
Well, Dave to speak.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make a point that on the application that we approved, uh, I'll get back to that. I'm, I'm part of the zoning commission. They did address the public, um, issue on the zoning ordinance. It's on the, uh, page 11. Uh, handwritten number on page 11 about what, uh, they talked about the Edco schools in Colesburg and giving the tree tours. So I don't, I thought, uh, Ms. McDonough said that, that that was not a part on the subject, on the application, but it was.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
And, and again, that goes to the fact that anyone who's found to be not in compliance in 10 acres is going to go out and find folks who might want to see the grounds. It's, it's an after the fact attempt to make it seem that it's a public, it, there's a public purpose, but it is a private gated lane. Um, so at this point, I think we have to determine amongst ourselves whether we feel we're best, the county is best served by us following the zoning ordinances or whether we think maybe we can agree it's been long enough. And then I, I think we, we saw the county short.
I agree that there's, uh, there's issues with the zoning ordinance that need to be cleaned up. A lot of it was brought about by Mr. Kendrick. Previous actions of not getting permits, which muddied up the water substantially on his own part. And he is, he has admitted to that. I guess I don't know that how we can make this work. He's trying to correct what he's done wrong. And we have some problems with our ordinances that we need to get straightened out for everything to mesh the way it's supposed to. I don't know if it's right to continue punishing him, telling him he can't use his property because we have a problem. But then again, some of the problem was created by him when he built the.
He can use his property and he is. It's just that he can't, he doesn't have a septic system in the second home. There's a, there's a house there that fully works. There's water to the property. It's a, it's a second home that isn't functional at this time. So.
So it's not usable.
The property is completely usable. There's another home on the property. If there weren't another home, or if he said, I'm tearing down the first home, we'd be in a whole different situation. Right? If the first home, which is older, goes away, we've got a, a home that you're building. Um, and I think it would all go forward. We would just check back to see if that first home's been demolished. That, that could be done. This isn't a, a not, this is, again, my example of taking something and trying to make it be something that it isn't. And if you want to change the zoning ordinance, we certainly can go do that.
I'm not saying change it.
But you can't make that, he's, he has to be held to the standard of this zoning ordinance that is currently in effect.
I'm very much where I was a month ago or so. I mean, I think if you look at, and then plus we have more steps. I mean, we've gone through the zoning application process. We've gone through the design review, we've got engineering designs. Uh, the DNR has been involved. Uh, they're not saying stop. The county attorney has been involved. He's not saying stop. The zoning board reviewed the case again and approved it six, one. Um, there's two people that are saying stop. Supervisor McDonough and one of the zoning board, uh, members, two lawyers. So I, I think, or former lawyers. I think we have everything in place. Uh, I don't see the harm to Dubuque County. I don't see the harm to the public. And, uh, I see that the landowner has gone through the steps that, uh, we've asked them to go through. And the board should approve it.
I have no recourse the next time this comes. We will have, the hand we will have played today if we approve this is that all folks who live in the unincorporated areas can do this very thing. You can build a second dwelling on a piece of property which you intend to use for recreational use. You can do that. Because we're now saying that that's okay, that that's a planned complex. And, and I think that that just, that opens the floodgates for this. That that is something that lots of folks would want to have. A couple cabins that have plumbing and showers that just, there, there's magnitudes of this that will come forward. And we will have altered what we're going to call a planned complex. And also if on, on a very legal, in the weeds level, we have altered whether or not we are going to require procedurally that things be completed. The county attorney that evening said the process had not been followed. That's attorney one. Catherine Caitlin, licensed attorney on the zoning board, giving legal advice pro bono. That is two. And myself with my education, that's three. Legal opinions that the process has not been followed. So if you know better.
I don't, I don't see the county attorney here stating those things and.
Exactly.
Mine, just.
No county attorney in the room.
Just in the last hour, we've approved five other zoning amendments to allow another home right next to a home. Okay? So the sky's not falling with another home on the Clayton County, Dubuque County border. We, we do this quite often related to allowing land use to be modified. I just, I just don't see the severity or graviness that, uh, you're describing, uh, be, be a reality today.
All of the other cases followed the zoning ordinances. This one did not.
You and another individual seem to be the only two people to state that out of the many, many, many other people that reviewed this. And so, uh, you know, respect your ability to dissent. But, uh, hopefully that doesn't stop a landowner from, from moving forward with their ideas and plans and sharing them with the public.
Is there a way we could come up with to make this work, Kirby? Go ahead, I got some questions for you. I've never been up to your area.
Kirby, Kirby Kendrick, 105 East Maple Street, Edgewood, Iowa.
Okay, I've never been up to your property. Supervisor, Supervisor McDonough was saying about removing a cabin. I don't know what the size of the cabin is, what kind of condition it's in. Is that a possibility?
Well, so when my parents bought the property originally, there was a small cabin on the facility. And that is, the intent is to be given to one of my other siblings. And then my parents and myself, my fiancee have the new structure. Um, because we're the ones that tend to go down there often. Um, and so by removing a structure, um, it kind of defeat the purpose of us wanting to enjoy it.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a possibility or not. That's why I wanted to ask. I didn't know what this other cabin was. I said, I've never been there. I don't. Curious on that.
And it's an unpermitted structure. We, the remedy to that is that it, no further work can happen. And that's been the case. And that there's, if only one building is allowed on this property, which is the current zoning. I guess they'd have to choose which building it is that they intend to use as the residence.
I was going to say the older one, uh, we don't know when that got built or if there was ever a permit for the original house cabin.
No, if I may, Supervisor Potoff, I understand we, we made a mistake. Um, but believe it or not, we did not intently go in and say, we know there's ordinances, we're just gonna continue until they catch us. Um, I mean, it was December and the Cessor was already coming up to the property and looking it over. So I mean, everyone does their job around here and it's not going to be five years later and someone's going to be knocking on the door and finally say, you got an illegal structure. Um, it, it was an honest mistake. Um, and I feel like in a way I've been, this process has almost been treated like maybe a, a murder case in a way and, um, had a lot of the zoning board speak in favor of it. Um, Attorney May was at our last meeting. Um, I did not get the vibe that Supervisor McDonough did, but I'm not an attorney, so I respect those views. But at the end of the day, I would, I would hope that uh, you folks today can vote in favor of this and we can continue to work towards our next step and getting the property zoned and get a proper septic and all the right legal things towards it so we can move on in life. Uh, Tammy asked when the public could access it, if it was approved.
My question was if they were approved this and if they were going to start having the school district come for their public access that they had talked about, when were, when were your thoughts of doing that, Mr. Kendrick?
Well, obviously y'all know school gets out usually in May. So, um, it depends on when all this wraps up. But, um, obviously being outdoors, it needs to be done in the warmer months. So either could maybe catch it yet this spring or for sure next fall when the leaves are turning and it's beautiful out in the timber then.
Sir Kendrick, how long have you and your family owned this property?
This property? Um, probably about eight years now.
And how many school tours have occurred on this property in the last eight years?
On this property? Uh, none.
In fairness, I know you do that on other properties that you own. You indicated that at a zoning meeting that you do have school tours or school involvement other places. Is that correct?
Yep.
So in eight years, nothing's happened on this property. So it isn't the weather that's holding up this. It is, it is you allowing or saying to the school that this might be another place they can come.
That's your opinion. But there's an opportunity to allow the, the youth come in and give a tour. Um, we're already doing it in our manufacturing process. So I do think this would complement the process well. I mean, yes, it's in the zoning that um, it needs a public use. Um, and we believe that fits. And we worked with the zoning. So I, I, I do believe that you can say that, oh, you haven't done it. You're just using this as an excuse. That's your opinion. I respect that. But, um, you know, we're, we're constantly changing our tours as well. But I'm not up here to, uh, argue and fight. And I'm just here hoping that we can get some progress made on this and move on in life. Because obviously I got time wrapped up in this money. Um, we're trying to run a business too, day to day activities. But at the end of the day, I appreciate all your time.
These are zoning ordinances. We adopt them, we publish them. They have the effect of law. Okay? An ordinance, when it's adopted, published, so forth, it isn't, these aren't just general guidelines or get close enoughs. And that's the unfortunate thing. You did ask to be planned complex. I believe that was presented to you as a, as a possible solution. And maybe it could be if we went through the process completely.
Supervisor Potoff, I, I believe you have, uh, one on each side of you. And so, uh, in sake of public interest, I don't know if there's new information you need or want. I would proceed to move the meeting along. If there's additional comments.
I have nothing further.
Don't have to take action today. It could be tabled if the supervisor has additional questions.
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second it. Have a motion of a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. Nay?
Nay.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that. Have a motion of a second to suspend requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the zoning administration be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and the order be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second that. Have a motion of a second that the amendment be adopted. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, the polls, Nay? Here is, moving forward, we'll go to the approval of Platts. We have a resolution to approve the final plat of Country View Estates, plat number two, Tammy.
Okay. This property is owned by Hales Mill.
Okay, this property is owned by Hales Mill Development LLC and is located point one nine miles northwest of the city of Dubuque along Hales Mill Road. With a total of forty six point six nine three acres surveyed. The property is owned R two single family residential and C one conservancy, and the purpose of this plant is to create a residential subdivision. The survey creates twenty five lots, lot nine through lot thirty three are a minimum of one acre in size. And each lot shall have its own individual septic system, there will be six shared wells, well number one will serve lots one, two, three, four, and nine. And well number two will serve lots five, six, seven, and eight, and thirty three. Well number three will serve lots ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. And well number four will serve lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty one. Well number five will serve lots twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, uh, twenty five, and twenty six. And well number six will serve lots twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty, thirty one, and thirty two. The Dubuque Water Department would recommend service lines from the water main to, to, uh, building structures to be copper with a control valve. curb stop and box near the right of way line. A copy of the water utility plan showing the water distribution piping from water wells and individual water service lines. Has been submitted and reviewed and was approved by the Dubuque Water Department. This property has provided a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions that will be handled by the Country View Estates Plat two. Homeowners Association, Inc., lots nine and through thirty three have approved residential entrances on permit number twenty one dash O three off of Hales Mill Road. The survey, the survey creates a sixty six foot wide right of way. Access easements that will be utilized in a public utility easement and stormwater conveyance easement. The site grades and the stormwater pollution prevention plans are detailed under the sweep for the entire forty six point six nine three acres. The final plat was, the final plat has provided an engineered road plans, including a site improvement plan. Stormwater calculation with plans showing infiltration of one and a quarter rainfall. For the entire subdivision grading plans and erosion control measurements. And covenants addressing the well and septic maintenance and the storm road and stormwater best management practices. And the maintenance by the association. The stormwater infiltration basins will be constructed on lots nine, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, and thirty. In relation of the primary structures as a reg, as a requirement of the Dubuque County Stormwater Ordinance. Uh, the survey meets all of the requirements for the stormwater management, Eric Schmuckel has reviewed all this and has approved it. There has been a modification to the size and the location of the basins where constructed. Will be constructed by the developer, must be approved by the developer and the Dubuque County Watershed Department. The maintenance of the stormwater infiltration basins will be specified in the covenants association in this development. The same criteria applies to the stormwater detention structures on lots nineteen, twenty, twenty five, and twenty six. Stormwater management basement, stormwater management and infiltration basins. Being used on this develop must be complied by the developer and maintained by the homeowners association. In all conformance with the Dubuque Water Stormwater Ordinance, um, there is a, uh. A list of, of things that they have agreed to and will be on their, uh, final plat. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat, the mortgage holders acknowledgement is signed and attached. And all of the signatures are current, this plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer and has all the required signatures, I respectfully recommend approval. So this has come before in front of you as a, uh, um, for a review for preliminary. And now the final is in place and, and I can let you that know that Dave Schneider is on for this case. Do you have any questions for me?
I have nothing Supervisor McDonough.
Just one, one question, uh, can you restate again the sewer and water, um, how they're either connected or on site? Is it city sewer?
It's county, it, it's county sewer and septic at this point. But they have to meet standards because it's within the two miles of the city Dubuque, they have to set this up if it ever gets placed into the city. That those, those are in place.
What's the water source then, is it a well there?
These are wells, those were all wells that I listed on certain lots, so they will share, so, um, like, well, number one's gonna serve five lots.
Alright.
So they start out with wells, and if they ever annex into the city, they have the, they'll have the, it all set up for it.
Water mains and the connections are already set up, that was the city portion.
Yes.
Um, my other question, do you know if they have to sign a, a pre-annexation agreement with the city?
I, I believe they, I, I believe they did. Because it's within the two miles.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat.
Second.
Have a motion of a second to approve the final plat, Country View Estates, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat, JJS Farm Subdivision.
Okay, this property is owned by JJS Real Estate LLC and is located one point nine one miles northwest. Of the city of Balltown along Ridge Road with a total of seventy six point three five four acres surveyed. This property's A one agriculture and you've just approved the, um, zoning case three eleven twelve prior to this. Uh, the purpose of this plat should allow for Jeff and Jamie Hammeran of JJS Real Estate to build a single family home. The survey creates two lots, lot one is a total of seventy four point four three five acres surveyed and will remain in current agricultural use. And current ownership, lot two is a total of one point nine one nine acres surveyed and will be sold to Jeff and Jamie Hammeran of JJLS. S Real Estate LLC to build the single family home. Lot one and lot two will use existing residential entrance off of Bridge Road. There are no additions or corrections required for this plant, the mortgage holders acknowledgement is signed and attached. And all of the signatures are current, this plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer, has all required signatures, I spec, respectfully recommend approval. This is the plat for the zoning case that you had just approved.
Should to approve the final plat of JJS Farm Subdivision.
And I will second that.
Have a motion of a second to approve the final plat of JJS Farm, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, ever, have a resolution to approve the final plat of Wilwood Farm Subdivision.
Tammy, this property is owned by Stephen Endon Wilward and is located two point five four miles south of the city of Upworth along Placid Road. With a total of seventy five point seven five acres surveyed. This property is owned A one agriculture and A two agricultural regis, residential that was on zoning case number eleven twenty seven of twenty one. The purpose of this plant is to separate lot two and lot three for sale, lot three for sale purposes. To allow Eric Leahy to build a home on the farm, um, the property that he is purchasing and he will continue to use this property for agricultural purposes. The survey creates three lots, lot one is a total of forty two point five eight acres surveyed with a home and buildings. And it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use, lot two is a total of thirty point three four acres surveyed. That will be sold to Eric Leahy and it will remain in agricultural use. Lot three is a total of two point eight three acres surveyed and it will be the site for the new home for Eric Leahy. Lot one will use an existing resident entrance off of Placid Road and lot two will use an existing field entrance off of Placid Road. Lot three is an approved residential entrance on the permit number twenty one dash fifty two off of Placid Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plant, there are more, there are no mortgages on the property and some of the signatures were sixty days old. They included the surveyor October twenty sixth of twenty one. Uh, engineer November sixteenth of twenty twenty one, county planning and zoning November sixteenth twenty twenty one, attorney's opinion. December second twenty twenty one, county assessor November sixteenth twenty twenty one, county health November seventeenth twenty twenty one. This plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer, has all the required signatures, I respectfully recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for a Wilwood, Wilwood Farm Subdivision.
Second.
Have a motion of a second to approve the final plat, the Wilwood Farm Subdivision, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat, Buddy Farm Subdivision, Tammy.
Okay, this is a follow up of your zoning case you just approved earlier as well. The property is owned by Thomas J Buddy, where a vocal family trust and is located one point nine seven miles north of the city Holy Cross along Tollgate Road. With a total of seventy point six zero acres surveyed. This property is owned A one agriculture and A two agricultural residential on zoning case number zero three ten of twenty two. The purpose of the plat is to separate the home and, and buildings for sale purposes. The survey creates three lots, lot one is a total of thirty point four one acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two is a total of fifteen point eight three acres surveyed with a home and buildings and it will be sold. Um, lot three is a total of twenty four point three six acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one, lot two, and lot three will all use an existing twenty foot, twenty four foot wide access easement off of Tollgate Road. There were no additions or corrections required for the plat, there are no mortgages on this property and all the signatures were current. Uh, this plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer, has all the required signatures, I respectfully recommend approval. Again, this is a follow up to the Buddy rezoning that you just did.
Final plat Buddy Farm Subdivision.
And I will second that.
Have a motion of a second to approve the final plat of Buddy Farm Subdivision, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, Gary's.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Move to the action items, have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks. Double four, uh. Conservation part time and Sunny Crest.
Great, so what I would just want to point out is we have permanent full time CNAs at Sunny Crest and that hourly rate is fourteen dollars and thirty cents.
Correct, that is the higher step under the union contract.
That's the highest it can be.
That's the higher step, that's the step one.
Okay, and then we are hiring temporary part time. Grounds maintenance for conservation, those folks are going to do groundwork.
Yes, they are, um, the seasonal crews for the conservation and for the parks.
And we're paying them fifteen dollars an hour.
That is correct.
We definitely have wage disparity issues in terms of need. We are paying, um, significant amount to agency hire for CNAs. They're making eight dollars more per hour under the agency contract. And there's profit to the middleman with the agency hire, um, so we've got to get some work done.
Yeah, I'm working with Emily and Danny on that compiling information to bring that forth to you.
That's a union contract issue though, is that correct?
We, we are required to negotiate, um, base wages with the union, yes.
Spending about twenty grand a month. On agency to hire CNAs.
That'd be good issue to bring up with the union.
Have a motion to approve.
I moved.
And I will second that.
Have a motion of a second to approve the hiring of deputies assistants and clerks, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Carrie, sorry, I didn't hear you. Next, we have a resolution. To approve the twenty twenty one Iowa certified local government annual report submitted by the Dubuque County Historic Preservation Commission.
To approve.
And I will second it.
Have a motion of a second to approve the. Board, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution. To prove necessary documents with top grade excavating incorporated for the HMA resurfacing culvert replacements and grading on Haber Corn Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for top grade excavating on Haber Corn Road.
Okay.
Have a motion of a second to. Approve, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Taylor Construction Incorporated for a bridge replacement on Hickory Valley Road. Project LFM dash B twenty three parentheses two dash seven X dash three one.
With approval.
And I will second that.
Have a motion of a second to approve the documents with Taylor Construction, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Taylor Construction Incorporated for a bridge replacement on North Bangston Road. Project L dash B twenty three parentheses three dash seven three dash three one.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion of a second to approve the documents with Taylor Construction, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the plans and specifications for the bid, bridge replacement on Conrad Lane. Project L dash B two three parentheses four dash seven three dash three one.
With approval.
I will second that.
Have a motion of a second to approve the plans and specifications for the bridge replacement on Conrad Lane, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution approving the allocation of project funds from the county's ARP. A dash SL FRF allocation.
Discussion. I'd like discussion on this, please.
That's fine.
So we created one resolution including all items. And I did not vote for all the items that are on this resolution, and so how will we handle that?
I had reviewed that same, same issue, um. Now, the other, the only other item is to break them off to separate resolutions if you wanted each supervisor to be on the record with each individual. American Rescue Fund, um, I'm not saying that's necessary, but that would be the only mechanism to be able to do that. If you wanted every funding to have all accountability of our votes. I mean, certainly the, the discussion and the, uh, uh, the motion and resolution to get this far is all documented in there. So you can kind of see who's, who's leading what and who said what when. But, uh, I wouldn't object to that if that's how we want to handle these, it's just a lot more pages, a lot more resolutions.
Oh, it would break it out to the way it was voted on, I guess.
I think there are mo, most here, I think are. We had full consensus, we actually had unanimity. And those could have been a resolution going forward, and then there are those where there wasn't, and someone may still wish to, to vote no. And that's would be the reason to not put them all together.
I, I think one of the things to understand though is, you know, you know, we do this every year in our budgets for every department. So we have work sessions in every department, all eighteen or twenty two, however many there are, separate that come to us. And you'll get a two to one vote or, you know, in either way to say, no, I don't want you to spend this, Mr. or Mrs. Department head. And then the entire budget is included and voted on, and, uh, we don't break that out either. So there is precedent to, to, to have items lumped together, so. I'm okay moving forward today as is, but if, uh, if, if my colleagues want to break them out, then we'll break them out.
I intend to vote no today, so you can certainly go forward, but that would be the purpose of my vote.
I think we will have it broke out, I guess we'd need to go through and which ones need to be broke out. I don't actually remember.
I'd say if you're gonna break out, Tommy might as well break them all out, so then we're on the record of every, everyone supporting or not supporting it.
Supervisors, Stella Rundy, Budget Director, um, we'll happily bring this back next week with all of them broken out. I would agree that if we're gonna break some out, I think we just break them all out and set that precedent, that each one would be acted on by a separate resolution.
Yes, we could do that, I think that'd be best.
The other thing I would ask if we're going back to the drawing board is to be more specific than what this says. Okay, so, um, if we're gonna take time, we're gonna break them out individually, we could indicate greater detail. Than just something just parked there, right? So it kind of gives us a precursor of what the contract's gonna look like. So when we vote on Unity Point, for instance, it says to mitigate public health, but I believe we. There was consensus, they were gonna use the money to develop a storage closet. So I'd like to say that there's something, if, if there was more specificity here during discussion, I think that should be reflected in the resolution.
I mean, the, this is the auditor, the, you will have contracts to approve as well that would outline that information, so that is your sort of safety net back on there. I think for the purpose of expanding the process, if we're gonna break this out into multiple resolutions, that simply continuing sort of the, the, uh. The layout that we've done would be adequate for the protections put in place, and then when the contracts come around, that would be when you'd have your opportunity to. Can you make sure that it meets everything that was presented, that there weren't any follow up questions?
Yeah, I, I would agree, I think, you know, there's, you gotta keep, keep in mind how this was set up, top level. This funding came from the federal government directly to local governments, previous CARES funding did not, that went right to the state. And so the only way you got that is to go through the state or go through the federal government. And so I would caution the board and staff that we don't follow the nine thousand rules. That the federal government puts in front of people to get funding, that's why we have the funding in front of us is because we are more nimble. We are more, we are more reactive to the needs of our community, we have the full applications, they're all online. They've been in the public eye multiple times, we're gonna have contracts and agreements with each one of these entities. I don't think we want to create a bureaucratic, bureaucratic, you know, duplication of what the federal government, uh, normally does. That's why the funds were, were provided with guidance to the local government so that we can react quickly.
So we can use an example, and I don't think it, it rises to the level of Congress, but, um, for example, the, um. Kevin Schmidt is here, great job being the front page of the paper, I commend you for that. And there is in, one of the Dubuque County firefighters volunteer recruitment, not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. But what that actually is, is an initial twenty five thousand dollars to be added to the Tom Hancock grant. As restriction for that purpose to see, right, and you know that Kevin and I know that, but the public doesn't. So eventually the contract's gonna spell all that out, I don't know why that can't be. That's just a, a more complete sentence that we would vote on in the resolution.
So it was drafted, just to let you know, um, with the organization name and the project. So, it was drafted, just to let you know, with the organization name and the project name and the amount approved. So, those weren't descriptions of the project, more so as the name of each project.
There isn't a reason we couldn't, you don't, you don't have to act like Congress to be more descriptive in the resolution, that is my point. So, however people wish to go forward, but I, I think. The greater transparency is to be more accurate even at this level.
Can I just bring it back next week?
Sure.
Broke out a little further.
I think we have direction to spell them out into individual resolutions for next week. Okay, thank you, Board.
Thank you, Stella.
And then when you come back next week as well, I think this room is full with folks who want to know what's happening. So, when we do this, can you make a presentation as to when the money is going to go, what's their next steps? I mean, I value that Teresa Caldwell is here today, and that is going to approve funding for your new building. But what, how will they get funding, I mean, I think there's some timelines that they need to know about as well. Hopefully, that can be part of next week. Is it required that folks come, I mean, they are always welcome to be here.
Hi, this is Ed Raiber, after that memo was on the agenda, I. Emailed the people that, whose name was on that, so that they were aware of that, but I did not tell the people that. They needed to come or even to Zoom in, but I did provide them that information if that's what they wanted.
As supervisors, there are multiple people on Zoom who are just indicating their presence as well, Salvation Army and Operation Empower and NEI. Three A is also here. And Clark as well.
Well, that's been moved to next week, we'll have some clarification on that.
Do you want to form a motion to table?
You won't need a motion to table, you'll simply take no action.
Moving on to communications, we have City of Dyersville voluntary annexation, Daniel P. and Lori Jill Redinger.
Motion to receive and file.
I will second that.
I have a motion to receive and file, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have City Dubuque amended and restated Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Area Plan Version twenty twenty-two dot one.
Motion to receive and file.
I will second that, I think, I'm sorry, I'm just staring at the first one still on the screen, I'm like, why does it say City of Dyersville?
Have a motion and a second to receive and file, the amended and restated. Renewal plan, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have City Dubuque amended and restated Greater Downtown Urban Renewal Plan Version twenty twenty-two dot three.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Have a motion to receive and file, where's the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Mineral Management Plan, Farner Holsteins, Wrecker Farms South, Scott Angst, Dubuque County Farm, and Tom Ryan, New Site.
I guess if I would on that, I have reached out to Mr. Ryan, it's a new site, and so there's many, there's. A full packet there, there's not just the, the newer management plan, I understand we don't get to do anything under the current code and the DNR regulations. But it's a new site, and I wanted to reach out to Mr. Ryan to see if I could learn more. Because it's new, it would be good to be involved in the initial, so we might learn something, I don't know Supervisor Potoff, if you have. Knowledge of how these work from the beginning going forward or.
For the most part, have some, is it, I guess, see putting in a pit or.
Yes.
Above ground pit, underground pit.
And it's in karst geology, you know, so there's definitely the seepage opportunity if there'd be a. You know, it fails or something, but I also talked to Mike Freiberger, one of our solo water commissioners, to say. You know, is this a landowner, you know, again, we're doing new things, we are looking at these. I think generally in just a new lens, nothing we get to do or change, but. I have reached out, I've not gotten any, a response.
Think for a motion receiving file?
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file, Mineral Management Plans, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have appointments, open vacancies for information only. Move to personnel requisitions, motion to approve the personnel requisitions for a temporary full-time engineering aide, summer intern. For Anthony.
Yeah, wages very, very low for an engineering student to come and take this work. Fifteen dollars an hour.
It is consistent with what we have for wages in our IT department internship as well.
Do we have any information about how other, how engineering students are recruited to do internship programs?
I think Anthony is on, I believe someone had reached out to him regarding this, I'm unsure if he's had internships before Dubuque County, if you could address that.
Yeah, this is Anthony, so good morning. This is be the first time since I've been with Dubuque County that we have a, an actual intern from a, from a college institution. Working for us, so this, this is kind of new grounds for us. I would say the fifteen dollars an hour is probably pretty close in line with what you would see for, you know, a, a first year summer intern with really no experience. So, this person's gonna come in and, and need to be taught a lot of things and, which I'm happy to do, I, you know, one time I was a summer intern. And, you know, I, I love paying that forward to the, to the next generation. So, if this person were to come back in, in another summer, next year sometime, I think that, that would be grounds for potentially increasing the pay.
Any, is this person going to start in mid-August?
No, the start date should be, I think it's May eighteenth.
Just be through the summer before school starts, correct?
Correct, yeah, so May eighteenth would be the start date, and he would be going back to college sometime mid-August.
Is that what it says there, duration of temporary employment, the same May or mid-August?
The summer end.
Well, the date needed is five eighteen, which is, well, when he's starting, and the duration of the temporary assignment is through mid-August, is kind of what we're trying to state. And, and I'm willing to be flexible on that, you know, that's, that's approximately when he goes back, but, you know, sometimes. Summer help kids, they, they want to take a week or two off before going back to school or something like that, so that's kind of to be determined yet.
So, the date needed is May eighteenth, and then the duration is, just says mid-August, that's how we read that.
That's correct, it's just a, just a summer internship.
Yeah, Anthony, I think it's a, it's a real good idea to do the, the internships, I know Dubuque County has had those in the past before your, your term. And having three young adults that are stages of just getting out of college or in college. Having a paid internship at fifteen dollars, I think will be very attractive and, and rewarding.
And I would just note that the same person could do their summer employment at Duluth Trading, making twenty-one dollars an hour.
Wouldn't look as good on their resume for engineering, that's the intent, nor would they get to work with one of the best county engineers in all of Iowa. So, thank you, Anthony. I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
I have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for a permanent full-time correctional officer for the Sheriff's Office. That was the increase that was approved during budget for the additional correctional officer. Sheriff on.
I believe so, this is, the, he had presented to the Board, I believe, a couple times of. Moving the correction officers from a part-time position to a full-time position. So, he does have four currently budgeted for this year. That was approved during the budget process to add a fifth one so that we could. We could move deputy onto additional patrol deputy, and so this will be the fifth full-time correction officer as approved by the Board.
To approve.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the correctional officer, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 I have a number twelve here too, on this next page, said before or after.
After, okay. Move to public comments, at this time, anyone may address the Board on matters of which are concerned to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the Board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and Iowa code prohibits the Board from deliberating or acting on items. Not appearing on the agenda, individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Anyone in chambers wishing to address the Board? Mr. Smith?
Hi, Kevin Schmidt, eleven five thirty, Rapala Road, Dubuque, Iowa. I'm hoping I'm one of the ones that are approved for the rescue plan money, but question I have is. I was asking for a lofty number, I understand and whatever, but the question I have is can this ARPA money be. Extended to the Hancock Grant for the next three or four years, that if the, that the county doesn't have to backfill it. You know, because you have what, four years or five years to spend it?
Three years, I believe.
Three, whatever, if that money could be put in there, you know, additionally. To fund it, and then you could take it out if it don't work or whatever the case may be, but to, that way you're not using county funds. For the next three years per se, that's, it was just a question I had, to allocate a little bit more of this money towards. Yes, and I, I think it will be successful, I hope it was successful, and I just. Thought that I just had sitting there.
Very good idea.
So.
Kind of thought our. Discussion about it was like twenty-five thousand a year until.
Right, but it was.
Had to.
Oh, I didn't know if it was the ARPA money would be used for it, or if it would be county.
I guess that was my feelings on it, that it was gonna, the twenty-five thousand be for the three years. Add.
Obviously, we didn't completely flesh it out because it was just one, one, for one year.
That's what I assumed it was, it'd be one year, but the question, but you also insinuated that. This potentially could go on the Tom Hancock Grant to, as a yearly thing, but my question is for funding of that. Use the rescue money for that funding of it for the next three years or whatever the case may be.
And, and I would, if it works well and people are excited about it, I wouldn't, when the rescue funds are gone, which they eventually will be.
Correct.
It may be in autumn, it just may be part of the budget.
Yes, and, and that's, but I mean, I was just thinking if it could be.
I thought twenty-five thousand might not be enough, we just picked the number, Kevin.
Right, and, and, and again, I have no clue as well, I just thought. If it could be funded for the next three years, and maybe we could move that money, if it's not enough, or if it's too much, we can do other things with it, but. Move the third year into the second year if we had to. So, thank you, appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate the article yesterday.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board? Chambers? Have anyone on Zoom wishing to address the Board on chambers?
We have nobody on Zoom.
All right, we'll move to the canvas. Okay, these will be the. Cascade Specialty election of March twenty-ninth. Ninety-nine votes. Cast candidates Brandy Keen Lance for, Bill Hosh for forty-eight, Sue Nepper forty-seven, scattering zero. Cascade City Council to fill the vacancy, Bill Hosh received two hundred eleven votes. Brandy Keen Lance received eighteen votes, Sue Nepper received two hundred and ten votes. Grand total of four hundred and thirty-nine votes, with scattering of one votes. Four hundred and forty votes total. So. Read this? Okay.
We done? I'll make a motion recess for five minutes.
Have a motion and a second to recess for five minutes, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will return at ten fifty. Aye. We will return at 10:50. Call the Board of Supervisors back into session. We'll begin with our work sessions for the morning. We'll start with our COVID update with our interim health director, Samantha.
Hi, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you this morning, Samantha?
Good. How are you?
See you.
Yeah, you too. It feels like it's been a while.
It has been.
And I was thinking back on when I presented in March, and I had said that I was feeling really optimistic about the situation we were in. And I come to you today feeling, for the most part, the same way. So, it's exciting. Okay, so this is our community level as of this morning, according to the CDC. And like I explained in March, the CDC uses three metrics to determine our community level, and that's new COVID-19 admission per 100,000 in the last seven days, percent of staffed inpatient beds occupied by COVID patients in the last seven days, and the total new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 in the last seven days. And as you can see, Dubuque County and most of the state of Iowa are still at a level of low, which they were at when I was here in March. When you're at a level of low, the CDC recommends that us as community members are staying up to date with our vaccines and boosters, maintaining improved ventilation throughout indoor spaces when it's possible, following our CDC recommendations for isolation and quarantine, which still have not changed. And then if you're immunocompromised or at high risk for disease, have a plan for testing and treatment if and when it's needed. And then just to note that these recommendations don't necessarily apply to some community facilities, especially healthcare settings. And the Board of Health did formally adopt the CDC's recommendations for this low level in their meeting in March. This slide is showing our positive COVID cases in Dubuque County since the start of the pandemic in March of 2020. So as you can see, we're definitely lower than we were in about November to January of this past year, which is great to see. But I do want to note that the COVID-19 pandemic is not over. Though things are headed in the right direction, there's still unpredictability with the future of COVID-19, especially when it comes to the variants. The incident management team has started to spend more time and energy on other public health issues that may have been set aside throughout surges in the pandemic, but that doesn't mean that COVID-19 is completely gone. So with that, I want to urge people to continue using their mitigation practices and stay up to date with vaccinations and boosters. As you can see from this chart, which was sent out to Dubuque, Dubuque County on Wednesday, we did go up in our cases in the last seven days from 16 to 25. But within that same timeframe, our hospitalizations went down to two, and we have had no new deaths since then either. These are our COVID-19 variants by month in Dubuque County. As you can see, for March of 2022, IDPH estimated that 100% of all of our positive cases were the Omicron variant. And this is the same for the state of Iowa as a whole. We can't see April county data just yet, but we can see it for the state of Iowa. And for that, so far this month, they're also predicting that Iowa is seeing 100% Omicron cases. I anticipate that we'll be able to see the county view for that in the next few days. This is our positive COVID cases in Dubuque County by age in the last month. And it's really similar to what I showed last month in this breakdown, really pointing out that those older adults and younger children are the ones with the highest rate of cases in the last few weeks. This is just some vaccination data as of this morning. 70.5% of our residents five and older have completed their vaccination series or in the process. 97.57% of residents 65 and older have completed their vaccination series or in the process as well. And 56.7% of residents 12 and older who are fully vaccinated now have their initial booster dose. There's a full list of vaccine information and opportunities in Dubuque County on our website. And there's also continuous walk-in clinics at the VNA, which is just across the street, on Mondays and Fridays. We're also still staffing our sleeves upline and the VNA hotline, which both continue to get calls, but not as frequently as we were in the past, as you can imagine. So this is the big news I have to share with you this month. As of Tuesday, March 29th, the CDC officially recommended a second booster dose for adults 50 and older, and those with certain immunocompromised situations. Those in this category who received their initial booster dose of Pfizer or Moderna at least four months ago are now eligible for a second booster. Additionally, those in this category who received a primary vaccine and booster dose of J&amp;J in the last four months are now able to receive a second booster dose using Pfizer or Moderna. And I got that information directly from the CDC. It also lists there at their website that immunocompromised individuals may include those with cancer, kidney, liver, or lung disease, cystic fibrosis, dementia, dis, sorry, diabetes, disability, HIV, heart conditions, brain health conditions, obesity, physical activity, things of that sort. But I did include the link here, where you can read more about those immunocompromised individuals that would qualify. It also provides a really good table showing exactly what to do if you got this dose of the vaccine the first time, and you're eligible for a booster now. So it's very easy to follow, because I know it can get a little confusing about when you become eligible for that new dose. But the Dubuque, Dubuque County Incident Management Team is meeting this week to discuss more avenues to promote this booster dose and get this information out to the public. Though we do not anticipate the mechanism by which individuals receive the booster dose will look much different. They'll still be able to go to the same providers that they did for the other doses as well. Yeah, okay. So that's all that I have. I just wanted to also let you know that the Incident Management Team is still continuing to have our community meetings every week, or every other week with the schools and other community partners, like our vaccine providers. So that hasn't changed either. But our next Board of Health meeting is next Wednesday at 4:30. So if you have any questions now, I can try to answer them or take them to that meeting, too. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any questions?
I have nothing. One question that kind of piqued my interest was the, the vaccination rates of over 12 that haven't been boosted, or have been, I guess. So it's 57% of my memory is correct. And so roughly, you know, over 40 some percent. So if that's correct, over 40 some percent, have had no booster.
Yeah, so that's a slightly confusing statistic, if you're just looking at it without the full context, which is that those 12 and older who are fully vaccinated aren't all eligible for their booster yet. You become eligible for your initial booster five months after receiving your second dose of Pfizer or Moderna, or your first dose of J&amp;J. So there is still about 40% that could get their booster, but they, not all of them might be eligible just yet.
Agreed. But I think a majority of Dubuque County had gone through the vaccination through, basically, the spring and summer.
Yeah.
Maybe not their, their second shots. But, so my, my real underlying question is, how long does your, your first two doses of vaccination, so to speak, last?
Yeah, I do not know, like, a definite answer on that for you. The CDC or the Iowa Department of Public Health hasn't provided us with exact research showing how long those doses last. But we know they're recommending to get the booster five months after. So I would, I would stick with that. I would say that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Samantha, I have just one question. The VNA walk-in this afternoon.
Yeah.
Will they give the, the second booster?
Yep, and they've already started. Yeah.
Do you need your vaccine card with you?
Um, I believe if you have it, you should bring it. I think if you can't find it, you know, it's easy to lose that little piece of paper. They can look it up, too, on our IRIS program.
I've, I've heard people discussing that they wanted to get a booster, but they didn't have their paper with them.
Yeah, we can look that up.
Just go ahead and get, if they're going to get the booster, just get going.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nothing. Thank you, Samantha.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good week.
Next, we'll move into our work sessions for ARPA applications. Presentation from St. Mark's Youth in Richmond.
Good morning, friends. I'm Beth Magori, the Director of Donor Relations at St. Mark's in Richmond. And I have my colleague here, Caitlin Schmidt, our Director of Strategic Resources. Can never remember her name, or her title. We're here to present on one of our largest outreach projects for, and it's Fill the Bag Apples for Students. It's our school supply project. Next slide. Over the course of about 20 years, we've served over 28,000 students with school supplies. And those school supplies started in the basement, being packed up at St. Mark's Youth in Richmond. And when I joined the team, we were serving about 1,000 students annually. We have expanded that project over the course of the years to the last two years of serving 3,500 students in Dubuque County. The reason for the need of school supplies is very much in our hearts and in the core of what we do at St. Mark's, and that is social, emotional health, and allowing children to have the first day be okay. The first day of feeling like they belong here, and their needs are being met. It also takes an amazing amount of stress off of a parent's plate. The economic impact of starting school is huge. With just a bag of $40 for school supplies can take off some stress of a parent. I remember a back-to-school bash a couple of years ago, and this mom coming up thinking that she was going to get her school supplies at that back-to-school bash. And we were packing things up, and it was the end, and she just broke down and started crying because she couldn't afford to buy her school supplies. And when I found out where she was going, I got to tell her that this year, every child in her school was receiving school supplies. And that's where our 3,500 students came. So, last year's impact, 30 area schools from East Dubuque all the way to Western Dubuque School Districts, so the three school districts, 3,500 students. It included all of the five Title I schools in town received school supplies for every child in that school. Every seat in that school got to feel that they were loved and packaged with this amazing bag of school supplies that I'm going to be a geek and tell you that the smell of crayons makes me happy. And when I get to talk to children, the smell of crayons makes them happy. And who knew that that was going to help start a day and start a year? When I talk to teachers, the ability to have that there on their first day. How we decide how kids and which kids get our, the bags of school supplies, like I said, Title I schools, every child in those Title I schools will receive a bag. And then we look at the rest of our community. And we reach out and partner with every school in the districts to identify children. And those numbers that we're basing our budget off of are free and reduced lunch numbers. And so, growing this project, especially into our Western Dubuque family, has been huge for us. Last year alone, there were 116 Dyersville kids. And we're anticipating over 125 to 150 Dyersville kids, including about 57 in Cascade, who would qualify for these school supplies within the county. Next slide. The importance of this to me is, one of our first graders, I got a thank you note from a first grader. And he said, "Thank you for making me feel normal." And that, to me, is what our kids are looking for. They're looking for an opportunity to fit in. And when everyone else has their things, and their brand-new shiny tennis shoes, and they're already feeling like they don't fit into a school district, and that this opportunity that they've got, all of the things, they've got Crayola. It's not just rose art, it's Crayola markers and things that actually mean something to these kids. When my buddy Kendell came down, and he was coming to help volunteer with this family, and we gave him his bag that day. He's like, "These are for me." And I'm like, "Yes, they're all for you, buddy." And so, it's, it's one of those things that these kids feel loved in that opportunity. And for our moms and dads, knowing that this helps build their confidence, Deanna is a great, she's just a great mom who is working her tail off to make sure that our kids are feeling good. She comes down and volunteers with us, and, and her kiddos are receiving these supplies. When we've expanded this program, we expanded into our middle schools and high schools. So it's not just elementary school students that are receiving these supplies anymore. So we are adding to the giving closets at Senior and Hempstead, and making sure that our students over at Alta Vista are being taken care of as well. So that inclusion of our middle schoolers in high school has increased the need for all of our students to be able to receive school supplies. That, when I, when I hear from staff at schools talk about how important it is for them to have their things, it is, it's so, it's heartbreaking, because the kids understand, our kids understand when moms and dads are struggling. They know when moms and dads are struggling to pay the rent and make sure that things are happening for them and their family. And they're feeling it every day. So when we get to take that stress away from mom and dad, we get to take it away from our students. So, next slide, please. So this is our 2022 plans. You'll see that there's only 29 schools supported on there, because they did not include East Dubuque, just so everyone knows where that happened. And so we've got seven schools and Western Dubuque Community Schools, reaching $14,440 per child, or for the entire district. And then the Dubuque Community Schools, 22 schools supported, at $126,480 worth of pencils, crayons, markers, watercolors, binders, and paper, making sure that our kids feel loved and our parents feel supported in this process. One of the amazing things that we've been able to do this year is, we're buying everything local. Every dollar given to this project this year is staying through a local supplier and distributor. And we are so excited to be able to partner with Hard Eggs, to make sure that every single dollar stays local this year. It's the first time we've been able to do that. And that brings such, we've been working on that for years. And Hard Eggs came through with us. And so we've already purchased all of these items. We have already purchased the 60,000 pencils that will have to go into those bags. And the opportunity to make this impact on top of taking care of our kids, but of our kids, but taking care of our families who are working and making sure that they're all taken care of. And money going back into the community is, it's a brilliant feeling. And I feel really excited that we get to say that this year 100%. Next slide. And this is my last one. This is, this is how I kind of knocked out some of the numbers. So we're asking for 60,000 over the next three years. And this year's first $30,000 would take care of every single Western Dubuque student who is in need of school supplies. And about 389 Dubuque students. And when I think of the need that Caitlin and I are working to fill and really working to take care of kids who might not be in Title I schools, that we're going to take care of most of our kids who are not in Title I schools with that $30,000. And that, to me, is a brilliant way for us to love on our kids and love on our families and support them in their, this time of not knowing where total funds are going. And with inflation, the price of our supplies jumped through the roof this year. And we know how inflation works. And being able to take some of that stress off of our families is one of our major goals. So, thank you.
No, just a question. You're saying 60,000 over three years, 30,000 the first year, then 15 the next two years?
20 or 10, depending on 20 and 10. Yeah. However, it works. Yeah. Yep. Our goal is to create a very sustainable opportunity for those 3,500 students every year. And we know that the number is actually growing. I'll be honest, it's really 36 this year. So, but you know, when we have to base our budget, that was where we landed. So more questions?
Just a comment. It seems like a great program. And I'm very pleased to hear that you're, you're buying all local as well. So that's an added boost.
Feels good. I'm not gonna lie. Some of our families work for Hard Eggs. So it just, it, it brings, it gives me goosebumps, I'm not gonna lie, to be able to really take care of our families.
Sure. So a couple of questions for you, Beth. First note that you run a machine when you put this together. I helped last year and do not get in the way of a retired citizen from the city of Dubuque. You, they're going to tell you where you fit in, a machine that puts these together. So I was glad to do that for some, it just would maybe, it's fun to see the project come together that way. So it was a great learning experience for me, too. But if you ever turn anyone away, you said these are for free and reduced lunches?
Not one. I'll get a phone call. Our team will get a phone call. You know, we didn't sign up. We missed the sign up because we rely on our schools to communicate with our families and then non-Title I schools. And we don't judge anyone for the circumstance that they're in that month. There are so many reasons. And I, I get phone calls all the time. Hey, Beth, you know, I couldn't do it. There's so much shame sometimes in the idea of meeting and signing up. And we'll get phone calls. We actually have probably a stash of five bags in our closet right now, ready to go, that if someone were to call and say, hi, I need school supplies, what grade do you need? And we'll give it to you. It's a never no. It's always a yes.
So it's not income based? You're just using the free and reduced as to budget?
Yep.
Okay. And last year, when the McDonough Foundation was presented with a grant for a program like this, but it wasn't from St. Mark.
Right.
Who, what, who else is doing this? And why is it so confusing to?
Yeah.
To drill down into best use of, of grant award?
Right. So when we started school supplies, we were only taking care of kindergarten through fifth grade. As we've grown this and the need for middle schoolers and high schoolers, that has been the quest of the storytelling process and who's running the right machine. When you say we run a machine, I get out of the way of our volunteers because some of them have doing it far before I moved here to Dubuque, they were doing it. And so there are folks here who were working to tell that story. And last year, when connected with the team that was supplying backpacks, and we've actually reconnected to work together and make sure that we are taking care of this, we're not taking care of the same kids. So there's no duplication. And so we feel that we do have the, not gonna, we have the best machine to produce all of this. And working with the teams, there are things that we have not been able to provide. We've not been able to provide backpacks and tennis shoes to every child in the district. And those are goals of ours, you know, being able to at least provide backpacks to all 3,500 kids. That would be an amazing day that aren't neon yellow, that tell everyone, oh, yeah, this is my free bag of school supplies. And might now, taking away some of that shame. And so those are some high lofty goals of ours. And, but as we partner with some of those other nonprofits in town, particularly with the Dubuque Community School District Foundation, that we're really trying to supply and make sure that the kids are taken care of. And so that we don't over and duplicate services.
I'm convinced that it's being duplicated. The outside looking in, I think it is. I'm not sure where the entry point is. I don't know if the Dream Center also, you'll have your chance. And I will ask the question, do you provide supplies to kiddos, too? I, I, you know, I was looking forward to the organization that's doing the work. And I know you do a big piece of it, but I get solicitations from other groups doing pieces, too.
Yeah. And you know, and I even, you know, with the Dream Center, we, when I first started, we were supplying other nonprofits who were then supplying. And I have to tell you, I used to have to literally check the list to see if kids were double dipping on a list, because making sure that we weren't doing that. And that was when we turned it over to our schools. And one of the things that I have seen in the past is people wanting to try to be super helpful, and they see a need. And they see that need, but they're not educated on that need. And they're not educated on who's doing those processes. And, and so I know that we work with our other nonprofit friends in town. As soon as we figure and hear those things, we connect with them and see how we can partner. But it doesn't always happen. I do know that us serving 3,500 kids is the most that anybody is serving in town. And when I look at the free and reduced lunch numbers, it's more than 3,500 kids. And that, to me, is that we're not reaching every child in town. And we need to be reaching every child in town. And if there is someone supplementing 100 bags of school supplies to someone who is in need, I'm not going to say no. I would like to bring them into the fold, and they can join our family and our team.
Is there any way for me to, in doing any funding for this, to put you in charge of bringing everybody in?
Yes.
Saying, I mean, I'm not, you know, honestly, again, I'm not interested in contributing to one nonprofit who's doing a portion of the work with federal rescue money. This isn't, you know, because you're here and others aren't. I want a solution. And that's what I'm looking for, is who's going to lead the solution.
We can lead that school supply solution. I can guarantee that.
And then what other funding sources do you have?
We do direct mail. We do other grants. Caitlin had listed about $57,000 in other grants that we will be working towards doing that, as well as sponsorships from our community and direct mail pieces. And that direct mail piece comes in pretty, this community supports the children of our county greatly. And so our sponsorships have been flowing in. And so we will continue to grow this. We have never reached our full budget line for this of $140,000. We have never reached that full. So we've always been working this project at a loss. And so our goal is to continue to grow that so we can hit our budget numbers. So.
I have nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Very much. Good to see you both.
Move forward to the Smokestack Industries, Susan Price.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What's that? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Susan Price.
And I'm Scott Cornwell.
Thank you for allowing us to speak with you today about Smokestack. The future of Dubuque is directly tied to the revitalization of the area immediately around Smokestack and the Dubuque County Courthouse. This section of White Street in downtown is a critical gateway to Dubuque. COVID-19's negative economic impact has made rehabilitation of this highly visible historic property nearly impossible. Smokestack, of course, is an arts, culture, and nightlife venue open for almost seven years, offering a wide range of programming to residents and tourists alike. What may not be apparent is that Smokestack has funded much of the work to rehabilitate this property. Going into 2020, Smokestack was well positioned financially, and Smokestack was on the cusp of finally realizing the vision we had for the property when we moved to Dubuque from New York City eight years ago. Next slide, please. Smokestack has always had a deep commitment to this community and its people. Our rooftop concerts in 2020 stand as an example of adaptability and giving back even during extreme hardship. These socially distanced concerts were a collaboration with many, including the county. Thank you for your part in making them possible. Smokestack itself operated these concerts at its own financial loss, and its benefit was in hosting these successful fundraisers for professional performers who had nearly lost all income. And they provided an important opportunity for audiences to get out of total isolation and enjoy live music safely. The rooftop concerts are among our favorite moments in Dubuque. Having the only public rooftops has helped Smokestack survive COVID-19, but that alone was not enough. What helped more was Smokestack's proven track record of respecting and bringing people together to share experiences. And we know that is a path to fostering inclusivity and belonging, especially for groups who are traditionally underserved and marginalized. And importantly, it fosters connection across difference. Tourists, residents, and people considering moving to Dubuque want to be where places like Smokestack exist. Next slide, please.
Performance venues worldwide continue to be decimated by COVID-19. Venues were the first to close and last to reopen. You can see the after, well, you will see an after photo of a packed audience in our first, first floor space, something that COVID-19 made impossible because public health and safety were simply more important.
Next slide, please.
Oh, there we go. We personally provided the funds and did the work that opened Smokestack and transformed its first floor from a derelict indoor junkyard into our main stage. However, Smokestack itself has been the revenue source for all subsequent work. The second floor gallery, the two rooftops, the stair tower that allowed public access to our upper levels, and all other rehabilitation and preservation of this historic property. Next slide, please. Saving this forgotten and neglected corner from intended demolition and transforming it has been our primary goal as stewards of this property in the heart of downtown Dubuque. The financial incentives that typically are associated with such projects have been denied this one repeatedly for a variety of ever-changing reasons. Not only did we provide the initial funding, but we did and continue to do the physical work to save the space ourselves. We did it alone for as long as we could, and Smokestack was able to step in and provide the funding until COVID-19 happened. Next slide, please.
We know this is a very significant historic site for Dubuque and the state of Iowa, and that modern historical interpretation reveals that this property's history of adaptive reuse mirrors Iowa's own story from prehistory to the present day. First, Native American burial ground. This is a sacred site. The second, the site of the 1834 execution of Patrick O'Conner for the murder of George O'Keefe, a series of events that was national news and changed this country. Next, the Jefferson House Hotel, built in 1856 and enjoyed 60 years of hospitality. The corner building shows Iowa's immigrant history. Next slide, please. A lot of attention is given to Smokestack's corner building, but the smaller building helps tell the fuller story of this historically significant campus. The Sanitary Milk Company built the eponymous Smokestack and processed thousands of gallons of milk from local farms from 1920s into the 1940s, pasteurized and bottled in the corner building and delivered daily from their garage next door to area homes and businesses. This campus is an example of Iowa's disappearing urban agricultural industrial history. Next, Farley and Letcher's last buildings. The smaller building was used for its lumber storage, yet this property was entirely omitted from the historic Millwork District directly across the street. A wide range of light industries were on this property in the 20th century before these buildings were neglected. And now this site as it is today, a four-story arts and culture venue with this city's only public rooftops in one building with a residential loft in the other. It's 21st century usage. Next slide, please.
This brings us to the future of Dubuque. As you can see on the map, Smokestack's property is at the center of four of the downtown districts at a major highway off-ramp, the ongoing revitalization of the Millwork District, and now cruise ships in the port of Dubuque. Thoughtful rehabilitation of this section of White Street is critical to Dubuque's future. What attracted us to Dubuque eight years ago is still here and is now taking shape for important next steps. We saw this city has the potential for creating a true world-class creative cultural center. We see that happening time and again in our hometown in New York City. The southern end of the Millwork District is now being recognized as a serious priority by other stakeholders in the city, with cultural leadership seriously looking at the southern end of the Millwork District for new and more engaging spaces. Smokestack is an anchor property for this part of downtown, but others are now seeing the development of the untenanted Kirby and Farley Letcher buildings as of very high importance to Dubuque, putting its best foot forward for tourism, for residents, and attracting future residents. Next slide, please.
Were the people considered by others as the future of Dubuque? Creatives, young professionals, tourists. Like Iowa and Dubuque itself, even big businesses need to attract a diverse and young population for their sustainability. These are people who want to have existing properties reused and developed thoughtfully, urban planning that encourages walkability. They want a vibrant and culturally diverse city. They want places like Smokestack, even if they never go to them, because pride in place includes simply knowing that places like Smokestack exist. Next slide, please.
Smokestack offers experiences and attitudes found in larger urban centers, more interactive, more open, more experiential as opposed to observational. These are some of the things that draw young people, tourists, and big businesses to major cities. These populations also have higher discretionary income, and they're often a younger tax base, something that Iowa and Dubuque truly need for a vibrant, vibrant and sustainable future. Next slide, please.
We have revised our budget for what we consider the final phase of this property's rehabilitation. We've already done some of the work in the original application and adjusted numbers to account for new estimates received, including COVID-19's higher cost of materials. We've also prioritized budget items. The interior work, restrooms, life safety, ADA access, are themselves crucial to code compliance and opening up the entire corner building to the public. Yet, the facade work on both buildings is the most critical as we believe the building exteriors will be nearly past saving in 20 years. Top pointing the Smokestack itself will run at least $35,000. And this campus is so highly visible, well-traveled, and it is a lone anchor, that the exteriors have to be the highest priority. Next slide, please. COVID-19's threats continue to travel in ways many of us never thought possible. In our case, it means, at the least, serious delay of Smokestack's final phase of rehabilitation, which leads to this part of downtown looking less than it might for longer than it might, which then impacts Dubuque and Iowa's ability to attract and retain needed populations and tax dollars. Thank you all again. Any questions?
I have to admit, I'm confused. So you're asking us to do, you're asking us to use federal funding to alleviate the negative COVID impact to, to do these things, to renovate your, your enterprise? Is that right?
Our enterprise at this moment may not be the enterprise 40 years from now. And we're trying to ensure this, the, the building stays, remains, and it is viable, and improve the, that, that section of downtown. That said, I understand, I would totally understand your point. Um.
We would feel that the building itself is historically very significant, which sadly has been underappreciated for many years in Dubuque. In fact, there was a demolition order issued on the building before we came along, but coming from but coming from New York, we thought it was absolutely an incredible, incredibly beautiful building and a great example of really mirroring the, not only the around Dubuque, but the history of the state of Iowa itself and all the different metamorphoses that have gone on in the building. It's just an incredible, an incredible piece of real estate, piece of architecture that we feel really deserves saving, and we don't have the facility, we don't have the ability to do it on our own anymore, having been denied so many funding opportunities.
And COVID-19's, the loss that Smokestack has incurred since 2020 has been extreme. We were, as we said, well-poised going into 2020, and that ended. All funding, our revenue changed dramatically, and it's still not back where it needs to be. And as we said, Smokestack has been funding the renovation of the building. The exteriors have taken, are very extreme, and they need help. This section of downtown is about to, is, people are really talking about improving this section of downtown. And again, we're just, we're, this built, this property is a lone anchor. We're one of the only things that people see when they come off the highway and out of the port of Dubuque.
And what funding are you receiving from the city of Dubuque?
We believe we can get a $10,000 facade grant.
But we have not received the funding for the city that we would hope.
In the past, and I have actually, in the last probably nine months, I think it was last summer and fall, I probably spoke with about 20 different people at the state level and the city level and about this exact, this exact project. Thank you. And I really haven't gotten any, we're not eligible for a lot of the stuff that might be possible. You know, I talk about maybe a community catalyst grant. We're too far along. There are many things like that. I mean, I spoke with a lot of people at the IEDA about possibilities. There really aren't as many possibilities as one might hope.
And being excluded from the historic Millwork District, even though we're right across the street, has been very difficult for us to kind of solicit any sort of funding for the historical restoration.
We're historic when it's a benefit to someone and not historic when it's to their benefit.
So when you have a $200,000 request in to us, and if we do not fund $200,000, what will you do?
We're just gonna-
Well, the buildings will probably deteriorate.
Yeah.
They'll probably have to be razed within the near future. I mean, they're very solid buildings, but they need to be maintained. It's 165 years old. It's one of the oldest structures in Dubuque and has an incredible history.
So I guess really what I'm trying to get to is that if we don't fund $200,000, then are you not sustainable and is it all for naught, so to speak?
Um, I would not say that. Scott and I are very determined people. That's the only way we've survived this long, and we have wonderful people around us. But our funding streams are just not there, and-
I sold my home in New York City in order to purchase the building and do the renovation that we are able to do just to open up. And then the funding from running the venue itself supported the rest of the renovation. At this point, we're tapped out. And no one is offering us any assistance from the city, so it's very difficult. And we just, we love the building. We love the building. We have such positive responses from people to come and see what we've done and see the building itself. And we tell them a little bit about the history, and people are honestly blown away. And we feel like we have to do whatever we can to try to preserve the structure and keep it, keep the integrity.
If we match the city's $10,000 facade grant, would that be sufficient?
Well, I mean, that would leave us, just on the exteriors alone, a shortfall of, I think, over $80,000. Wait, I forget what my number is, and it's a little small for me. It would leave us with a significant shortfall. There's, I don't think that there's any way that we can raise that kind of funding.
We can't make up that.
I don't think the state will give us, would, I don't think we are eligible-
No, we've gotten estimates from a few different restoration companies locally, and it's beyond, beyond our-
I mean, $80,000 for the Smokestack building, and I think that includes the Smokestack. I'm not, I don't, I can't see my numbers right up here. But, you know, I mean, that, that's out of our reach. That, it's gonna be out of our reach.
Especially post-COVID.
Especially post-COVID, exactly. I just don't see that that's possible for us in order to save the structure.
Jay, do you have anything?
Scott and Susan, this is Jay Wickham. I had the opportunity to go through that building, I think in 2010, when Mr. Fay owned it. And so I'm very appreciative of you bringing it to life. And, you know, I've been in the building numerous times since you've made your changes. And you can really see that it's a labor of love, and you put a lot of energy into the building to bring it to life. And I know you have a lot of events, so one of the things I'd like to, you know, understand a little more is, tell me about the use of the building and some of the nonprofits that currently have their meetings there and kind of the community involvement.
You're often a place where people start, they're like a jumping-off point for nonprofits and others. Examples, She Unites started in our space. They've now moved to a larger space. We're-
Entrepreneurs.
Other entrepreneurs. We have, we have other entrepreneurs. We have, the Small Business Collective has been, has started in our space. We held, I think, was it in 2021? We held the first all-black business expo. And, you know, I mean, so a lot of, and they're probably going to move to a larger space as well. Oftentimes, we're a place that is willing to take a chance on an unknown and help somebody else, including generating new businesses out of our space, our spaces. People have gone, have started a small business here with us and have grown. We have friends who are in farmers market, small farmers, where they're using our kitchen at almost no cost because we believe in what they're doing. It's, it's just some small examples. You know, we're also a place that, again, marginalized and traditionally underserved peoples feel comfortable with us and will ask us, can I do my event here? And we normally do take a chance on them.
I appreciate that. I know I've attended a few of those nonprofit events you mentioned, in addition to Green Dubuque as well. I know that has used your space. Kind of a comment to you two certainly applying, and then to my board colleagues as well. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this to light. I'm always amazed at the amount of energy and resources it takes to make old historic buildings livable and workable. And we're in run one right now. You guys are wonderful neighbors. So, and you know, we also, Dubuque County has a 135-year-old building. And, you know, we're fortunate enough to have, you know, the government's and/or the taxpayers' dollars that are backed to keep our exterior and the interior of the building looking really historic and having a lot of benefits. So one of the things I'll mention as far as a comment is that, you know, governments do contract through development agreements with private businesses all the time on infrastructure and their building and their assets, even the private hands. The city of Dubuque has done that in the past numerous times within the city proper, lest the county. Right now, the brewery that is on the north end of town is privately owned, and there's public money going to shore that up as well and has been in the past. So while I think you want to be cautious on, you know, striking those individual deals, it is something that occurs, just something that the county, Dubuque County, has not been involved in as much in the past. So maybe there's a way through either Heritage Works or through, you know, identifying some of the tax credits that are available and, you know, tagging onto those or other opportunities to help private entities that own these historic buildings keep them, keep them from falling down and keep them viable in our city because it's key to Dubuque that they remain viable. So thank you for your application. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I just, Susan, your enterprise is for profit. You're not a nonprofit, correct?
No, we're not a nonprofit right now. There's, we're talking about changing that. It's a process, of course, but we have been talking about changing that. There is no, it's not as simple a pathway once you've been up for profit. But we are discussing that. But our stewardship of this property will allow it to be here for others in future. That's, to us, is very important. We think that this property, regardless of what is in it, in future, maybe a nonprofit will be in it and not even Smokestack. It's not, it's less about Smokestack and more about stewardship and making sure that what we have today can be enjoyed by people in the future and in making sure that downtown Dubuque can put its best foot forward for its growth and the needed growth. This, that section right around us in the courthouse is really, we're very, is really critical.
Crucial area.
It's really critical.
We've also talked to Silos and Smokestacks. We've had numerous conversations with them about actually turning it into a museum because it's such a good representation of so many aspects of Dubuque's history. You know, from the immigrant population to the, you know, when it was the dairy, it was the processing plant for milk when bovine tuberculosis was a major health threat. And it served a huge area. And then just the various light industrial, including Farley-Letcher, it's fascinating history. And we believe that the building is beautiful enough and has this rich history that it could make a great museum.
I don't have anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan, Scott?
Good to see you.
Do well, guys. Thank you again.
Next, we have a presentation from the Dubuque Dream Center. Robert.
Greetings, county supervisors. My name is Robert Kimball, 2519 Washington Street, representing the Dubuque Dream Center. We'll give a presentation as a team today. I'll start it off, and we have a few stories. And then we'll also have our donor relations coordinator, Raquel, say a few words. I think the supervisors, most of you, if not all of you, are aware of our mission statement that our focus is to impact youth, strengthen families here in Dubuque, and ultimately build community. I also sent all of you our program model so that you can get a more comprehensive idea of how we carry out our mission. So hopefully you receive that, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but then we also, or I also provided our latest promotional video that provides testimonies in, from the schools, principals, volunteers, teachers, so that you all can see that the Dream Center, we don't just talk about our mission, but we are doing the real work, all the hard work to impact the children and families in this community. Next slide. Our original request to you from the ARP-A was to support us during the COVID-19 pandemic because we were impacted in a way that slowed down our ability to become a licensed childcare by the state and receive some additional state funding to move towards some sustainable funding in our future. And so we originally requested $932,000, $920. And as you all know, you were so gracious. I can't thank you enough. It was amazing. And really, we didn't expect it. We threw it out there and hoped that you would support us, but you supported us with $400,000. So therefore, at this time, we're just looking for $525,000 to help us with our summer programming that includes impacting students and summer reading and math proficiency and our end-of-the-school-year operations. Next slide. Like I said, thank you so much for that approval with the brain health funding. So far, you know, we've spent $307,105.35 have been spent towards the project, and we plan to expand all those funds that you approved by June 30th, which is that deadline. And working with Ann Williams, she has been such a support, and she has given us a lot of guidance in how to do a lot of the reimbursement paperwork. And so for us, just so that you all can be sure that we do have the capacity to expand this amount of funding, this level of funding. We have an amazing administrative team, and we just have a lot of support in the evidence that we can extend those funds is what we've already done with the first $400,000 you've given us. We've demonstrated authenticity in terms of how we extend the funds. We, all of our receipts, everything's accounted for. And so we just have a history of handling finances in support from whether it's the city, whether it's private, with a level of authenticity that they can trust. And so we thank you again, and we have that capacity and the impact. We say all the time that an investment in the Dubuque Dream Center is an investment in our community, and we have evidence of that, and lives have been transformed. Next slide. Just some highlights of some of that funding impact that you gave us or the impact of that funding that you gave us with the brain health. We will have an onsite counselor by the summer of 2022. We've had some professional development, brain health, first aid training. We've been able to sustain some of our direct service, what we call school connectors, direct service mentors. We are sustaining the high-quality youth enrichment activities that we have that contribute to social, emotional, and brain health development of our students that helps their motivation towards academic achievement. Next slide. Just to highlight a little bit of a history, if you don't know this, when the Dubuque Dream Center model was first being researched and assessed when we did a needs assessment, we partnered with the schools, and we found out that while the district was doing overall pretty well with the reading and math proficiency of the students overall in Dubuque, students in Title I schools and minority students were struggling the most to reach proficiency by third grade. Next slide. And when you look at where we are now as a result of COVID-19, everybody's struggling. When you look at the school performance scores in the state of Iowa and you look at Dubuque, Dubuque is struggling overall. The numbers are down. And they're also down with the other groups, with the Title I schools, the low-income groups, and the minority groups. Next slide. However, the Dream Center has always had a goal of progressing 70% of more of our students towards reading and math proficiency. And historically, before COVID, we were meeting those goals. Next slide. 78, generally 78% or more of our students were progressing towards math proficiency and meeting the math expectations, and 89%, oh, I'm sorry, in reading. And then 89% of the students were meeting expectations in math. And even during COVID, even though our numbers, next slide, even though our numbers struggled like everyone else, you can see as a result of the Dream Center's focus, we partner heavily with the schools, and students who were going to school half-day, they would come to the Dream Center on the days that they weren't at school. So that allowed us to maintain a level of progress for our students that many of other Dubuque school students who were not a part of the Dream Center were not able to. And so 60%, 66% of our students did well, were progressing still in reading or stayed the same. Um, and so sixty percent, sixty percent, sixty-six percent of our students did well, uh, were progressing still in reading or stayed the same in seventy-nine percent in math, even during COVID. Next slide. So now we're just gonna have some of our school connectors come up and just share some real life stories, um, of some of the students that they have served. So Nikia, you can come on up first and, um, all three of you can just kind of come on up at the same time. Latoya, also, and Tavi, and just remember to state your name, address, all of that.
Hello, my name is Nikia Kimball and I live at thirty, three, three, three East Tenth Street. Uh, my testimony is about a girl named Isabella Camper, who is now in sixth grade. She's been a part of the, uh, girls' basketball team for three years now. And I am a school connector for her, uh, through third through fifth grade. She had I E P in reading. She had trouble sounding out words and in math. Uh, sixth grade, her first trimester, uh, she received a three point four GPA and she was still on I E P for math. In the second trimester, she was taken off all I E Ps and received a four point O by herself. Uh, Isabella has taken the tools we have given her during their academic time to build her own success in the classroom. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Latoya. Um, I'm Latoya McCullough. I live at twenty-five sixty-three, um, M Street. Um, greetings. Um, I'm gonna share testimony about, um, one of our, um, girls, um, Cheyenne Brown. I am her school connector, her, um, in your life mentor. Um, post-COVID, you know, she was pretty, um, grounded and during COVID, um, she was just dealing, um, with a lot and, um, her grades has dropped. She was failing in all of her classes. Um, her mom really didn't have, um, access, um, to internet service, the things that she, the tools that she needed, um, so that Cheyenne could be successful. And by me being in her life mentor, um, and having a relationship and a partnership with the school, um, I was able to provide those resources for her. Um, us as a team, we, um, talked to, um, mom. Here Cheyenne to begin to come in, um, we created a plan for her, um, to get her grades up and just really, um, speaking to her life and continue to mentor her. So she was able to get her grades up. Um, right now she's currently in all honor classes, um, and she's doing amazing in s- in school. Um, even her mom is doing amazing and growing as a parent and they're just growing as a household. And she was able to, um, take the spotlight this weekend starring in, um, Dorothy at, um, Washington Middle School. Yay. Um, so, um, she's just doing amazing and she's growing all around the board, not just her, her and her entire family. And you know, I just really, really, um, hate to think about, you know, if we wasn't there, um, being that middle piece and that connection between the school and the parents and just really in your life mentoring, um, where she would have been and if the family would have been able to get over those barriers. But thank God that we were there to help them continue to grow as a family.
How long has Cheyenne been in the program?
Oh, um, four years, I think four years roughly. Yeah, like four to five years. I don't know. She's been in the program for a while. So, sorry.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Octavius Evans and, um, live on twenty-six fifty-five Raven Oaks Drive. Um, today, um, I'm here to talk about one of my students who, um, has been at the Dream Center around three or four years now. Um, when Ben, when Ben, um, came and when I actually arrived during COVID, I've been at Dream Center about two years now. Uh, when he came, he, um, struggled in his reading. Um, he had an I E P math and, um, struggling with his confidence and focus and in school. Um, but through our model of in your life mentoring and been in a relationship with him, um, his family and his teachers, we were able to regain a sense of confidence within himself. He was able to gain a conf- sense of confidence within himself. Um, as we walked alongside him, um, holding him accountable and helping him to learn how to stay focused in school, um, instilling good values, um, and character and assisting him with, um, homework through our academic center and allowing him of using his, um, gifted musical ability of singing. Um, we have seen such tremendous growth, um, to the amount of now he has, um, been able to achieve a three point five GPA. Um, he increased both his reading and math scores. Um, he's been, um, part of our leading performers in our, um, Dream Center concerts. Um, and two weeks ago, he was one of the students, uh, part of the Jefferson Middle School I JAC team and was selected to go to the Iowa legislators, like the state house. Um, and then last weekend, um, he was able to, uh, participate and have a leading role in, um, the Jefferson Middle School play. So, um, as you can see, um, we are working really hard and, um, doing the real work as, um, Coach Kimball said, Robert says, and, uh, and really trying to make a difference in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're gonna have Ra- Raquel come up and although, like I said before, I'm sure several of you supervisors, you know our model, you've seen our model, but we just wanna remind you, um, a little bit today. Um, and maybe anyone who's not familiar with what we do of our impact model and Raquel is gonna highlight some of that.
Hello, I'm Raquel McCullen. I live at seven twenty-nine and a half Lincoln Avenue. Um, donor relations coordinator, executive assistant at the Dream Center. Um, can we go to the next slide? So, um, the question that comes up often and we like to highlight is what makes the Dream Center unique, um, and different. And so in our community, um, what you've heard, the stories, um, and Latoya mentioned a lot, our model, um, is unique, is holistic, um, and it, it ma- it makes for a long-term impact. And what we call that is in your life mentoring. And so it goes beyond, you know, a program that the students come to after school, um, or just a summer camp or just an activity. It's actually being in the lives of the students, partnering with the parents and the schools. And so you'll see a couple of slides about that. Next slide. Um, what also makes us unique is the services that we provide our students. And so not only do we provide after school and summer, so we're year-round essentially. So we don't stop, uh, working with our students after a short period of time. We realize that real impact takes time. And so we're with them consistently throughout every year. Um, we also provide transportation. So if you see our Dream Center vans or buses, um, around town, we're going, we're taking students from school directly to the center and some students are also going from school or from the center to home. And we also provide that same transportation in the summer, which is a huge piece, um, to getting students to participate. Um, for a lot of families, it's a struggle to get their students to the program. Um, and then we're also providing those healthy meals, breakfast, lunch and supper in the summer, um, and also snacks and supper in the school year, um, along with the character development curriculum, um, and continuing the school day curriculum is, um, a huge piece as well that makes us unique. We, um, don't utilize our own, uh, academic, uh, curriculum in our center. We're actually doing the work that they're doing in school so that it can make an impact on their test scores and their homework and things of that sort. Next slide. Um, I will just point out on that last slide, you'll see that the cost that we have, um, laid out per student is four thousand dollars a year. Um, and so college and career preparation, that's that holistic, um, support that we were talking about. We actually serve students through the point of twelfth grade and beyond, um, helping them actually be successful adults in the community. Next slide. Um, so this is highlights, um, our school connectors and what they do. Um, the image that you see there is our partnership, um, again, making us unique of how we, um, strategically work with the schools and the teachers, um, as well as building relationships with those parents, all centered around that student and making sure that we're all on the same page, um, to provide high impact. Um, so if you see on the left, it just highlights again, um, what our school connectors are doing, a lot of what you've heard today. Um, they're continuing the school curriculum, they're teaching students their skills with those Spark activities, um, that they can use in, we got high school and college, but they're using it in middle school and making a difference, um, as well. And, um, instilling values through those personal relationships, which is huge and key to building community. Um, as we know, um, Dubuque is about community and they want to see, you know, people thrive here in Dubuque. And so, um, a lot of families that move into town are kind of starting here with us. And so they're getting to know Dubuque through us and through their relationships. And so we continue those and we don't wanna take those lightly, um, as well as going into the schools during the school year, meeting with the, um, students and the teachers to, um, help students that are struggling, um, academically and with character. And then, um, I kind of already said, mentioning, um, those relationships with families. Next slide. Um, so for the Dream Center, you know, as we continue to grow as an organization, we recognize, um, that we need to highlight, um, the im- our impact in different ways. And so we have, um, purchased some softwares, um, that will continue to help us track, um, our impact. Um, so you see social solutions there. Um, we're working on our, um, enrollment intake process, really breaking that down and, um, you know, getting to know our families so that, you know, as we're able to grow, we're able to support the entire family, um, on a wide scale. Um, and we also, um, have these programs that will help us make individualized plans, uh, knowing that, you know, each student is different and they have different struggles and different needs. And so we wanna look at each student as an individual. And so these systems will help us, uh, create these plans, um, along with building our reports, um, as well. So. Um, so this is our program structure. Um, that is another thing that makes us unique is our structure within, um, the Dream Center. So once students, um, come into the site, you know, each day, they rotate these, what we call stations. Um, and so they're spending time that's scheduled out for them to work on their academics, um, to build their skills and their activity and then take time for their meal, but we call it meal mentoring because also during that time of mealtime is where we're, um, working on character development as well. So, um, this is every program day. Um, and in the summer, it's more of, um, each of these as well. So the students, um, don't just come in and run around. It's not a free for all. It's very structured. Um, kind of almost school after school for some of them, um, as they're coming right into the academic center. So. This is just a history of our youth served. Um, we've had a goal of serving two hundred students. Um, and that's because that's the capacity of the facility that we're in right now. It does not touch the need that's in the community. Um, but if you look at when we started in twenty thirteen into where we are now, um, our numbers, um, are definitely increasing and we always keep a waitlist of at least a hundred students. Um, and we're still getting calls on a daily basis about families that want to enroll, um, their students. Next slide. And then this just kind of gives you a highlight of our staff progression since the very beginning, um, and where we are now, um, with our full-time staff and part-time staff, which again, our school connectors, um, the direct service staff.
All right. So that, that's a small and probably hard to see, I think, but, um, this is just given a, a breakdown, um, that includes, um, the support you gave us from the brain health, the amount of funds that would go towards our summer impact program, and then the amount of funds that would go towards the remainder of the year to make up our, um, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And, um, these are big numbers and, um, they, they, you know, we, th- they are beyond, uh, what we even imagined we'd be able to, um, receive support, um, from the county. But like I said before, the, the capacity, we can handle it. Um, there's a lot of initiatives. I've been in Dubuque a long time doing a lot of social services, uh, social work. And there's a lot of initiatives and a lot of funding goes towards a lot of initiatives, but the, the need from my experience is in the direct service. The people that are on the ground doing the work. And this is essentially what we're asking for these funds for is to help sustain the folks that are doing the work and the programming that is doing the direct service. And when you're there every day, working with the, the, the families and the kids, it's tough. I mean, just to impact one kid, it, it takes a lot. And so to talk about it and to talk about, you know, hey, we, you know, to, to have people promote that they wanna serve families, that's, that's, that's good. It's a lot easier than actually doing it. And so we really appreciate all the support and we really would appreciate the continued support to help us, um, continue to impact the lives of these children and families. Thank you very much.
Robert. Jay, any questions?
Well, first comment to, you know, to see the progression, I know we've, you've been here a few times in the past, but, uh, to see the numbers of where you started just, you know, six, seven years ago and where you are today as far as, uh, the number of, you know, service people you have and support people and then individual kids and families is, uh, very exciting. Um, and I tend to associate your aft- after-school activities and sports. So it's good to hear that a lot of them are, you know, participating in the arts as well, uh, as far as plays and stuff. So that's, that's wonderful. Um, my, my question would be, um, if you could talk a little bit about some of those programs and, uh, just to, you know, drill down a little bit on the programs that we'd be funding and what are those key benefits and key takeaways?
All right. So I, I'll just start from the top down and just highlighting if there's something I missed, let me know. But just starting with the, the kitchen, cause we haven't talked about that a lot in the food. Um, we're, we're actually gonna be losing some funding. I didn't, we didn't realize this at the time, becoming a licensed childcare because there's more restrictions to the USDA federal, um, dollars we can get being a licensed childcare. We won't be able to serve kids that are middle income. And so, um, j- just that four thousand right there, having that support, i- it's gonna help us. I don't know how we're gonna recover that. We're still thinking about that now that we, we're realizing as we're at, you know, we just found out two weeks ago, um, that we're realizing, hey, we're gonna be losing some USDA federal food funding by becoming a licensed childcare. Um, yeah, we, we, we gotta think about how we're gonna recover that, but that's one way. We get, if you, this funding would support, um, um, us purchasing meals for the kids and supplies. Um, the, the, the wages, et cetera, for the, um, school connectors, the direct service people. I mean, that just kind of speaks for itself. That's our biggest expense, but that's our most important expense. I mean, with, without the school connectors, nothing else matters. And so having the ability to have competitive wages, um, livable wages and sustain some of these staff, um, it's our lifeline. And, and it's difficult to sustain them because this work, it, you know, it's, it's tough. And so that, that's one of our line items that's crucial. And then of course, all the programming we do, the professional development, um, gases, gas prices is going up. So that'll help us, um, having support there. And, um, and that, and those are some highlights.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a thought about the food. So HACAP, Hawkeye Area Community Action Program.
Yeah.
Um, I was on their board before they became HACAP, so Operation New View. And Operation New View did help daycare get funding for food. So HACAP now owns, you know, they now hold those federal grants. Um, I'm wondering if, if a connector there might be able to help you kind of close some of that gap for how you're going to, you know, get funding for food items. Um, when you, you're now into, you've now transitioned into being a daycare provider. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah.
So, um, can you tell me some about that income stream and how that helps your budget? Are you getting reimbursement from DHS for kiddos that you're serving in a daycare capacity?
So not yet. We've just gotten our permission to open and that means we need to prepare, um, to, um, meet all the DHS guidelines to start drawing funds. And so that'll happen by the end of June. So we, we should officially start drawing funds by the fall of two thousand twenty-two.
You have a projected budget number for that?
We do. Um, we're, we're projected to be able to get six hundred thousand a year. So previously we were projected six hundred to eight hundred thousand when we first did our proposal, but we found out it's gonna be around six hundred thousand because, uh, right now we're only approved to get funding for a hundred and thirty students, in which we wanted a hundred and fifty. And so we, we gotta do some more work. And so we we gotta do some more work to get approved for a hundred and fifty.
Is it fair to say that in in July and going forward, there'll be a little more stability in your budget? Because you'll you'll know you'll have that daycare check?
Yes, well, there'll be more stability in the our our future, because we won't, we won't start drawing the funds. Until the fall, but once we're an official license and we know that we can get some of those vouchers from those low-income families. Then we can project our two thousand twenty-three budget.
Do you do the backpack program? Do you do it separate from Saint Mark? How how does that work?
We used to, so pre-COVID, we used to, and like they said, they became such a machine that we just let them do it. And then there was the um back-to-school bash as well. I don't know if they're partnering. But between that and Saint Mark's, we just asked them if we needed. But we haven't done it since COVID, though.
So you will be distributing their backpacks?
No.
What I understand?
No, so we'll just tell our kids to go to the back-to-school bash or go to Saint Mark's. That's what we'll do in the future. Whereas in the um, pre-COVID, we used to purchase school supplies for our kids.
Um, the date, when you begin to receive DHS funding, will, so the category that says fall slash winter?
Yeah.
Final item there?
Yeah.
Will any of those budget items be relieved by the DHS funding?
It poten- potentially could. So yes, so I just, we don't know right now, because. We we're projecting it, but we have to actually see it hap- like, we we have to, like, we have to say, okay, here's all of our kids that qualify. Then they gotta fill out that paperwork, and then we gotta get, start getting the vouchers to see how it works, so. So right now, we're just trying to do everything we can to raise funds to cover two thousand twenty-two. Because we've never been a daycare, got the voucher, so we don't know, we we, yeah, we don't know experientially how it's gonna work.
And then the the ARPA for summer?
Yes.
In the past, when I've looked at models to assist the Dream Center during summer programming. You and I talked on the phone about the summer school program, you know, that. The foundation was talking about, the number there, I thought was about fifty to eighty thousand dollars.
For us? That that they were gonna give us or that you and I talked about?
I thought you and I talked about that being a fifty or a thought for an eighty thousand dollar pass-through, and now they're not doing that. They're not passing through funds. Our funding for them is not for that. So you would be your your own entity for summer programming with us. I'm just so very surprised to see the size of the number, two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars.
Got you.
So what did I not understand about that, maybe?
So just so I I understand and I answer you correctly, so when you're saying the eighty thousand, was that what? The found, you were saying the foundation would give the Dream Center, like that forty thousand, um, that they were gonna give the Dream Center in Saint Mark's?
Right, and that's not happening now.
Okay, so first of all, that forty thousand that the the foundation projected. We didn't really sit down ourselves in the foundation to kind of come up with that number. So when the foundation was saying, hey, we can give you this, we we just said, great, you know, because we would welcome that support and we need it. But I, but we we never intended to give the impression that forty thousand would cover our entire summer budget. That that's, so, so I just want to say that. And and so my apologies if you if you misunderstood.
Nope, that ma- makes great clarity. Thank you.
No problem.
The one concern I had that I kind of raised before to my colleagues. The four hundred thousand dollars that was distributed to the Dream Center under Fund Ten, so our funded balance. That was for brain health. I don't know how we draw some kind of a clear line that that was brain health, but now this isn't brain health? Because the brain health funding is gonna become cloudy to to move forward on this. I think we're gonna need some May Henshin discussion from the CEO, like, can we do this? Does it have to go through the region? Just it's, I think it's gonna be messier than we think. And it's not that it's not doable, but. Can do, and we've given brain health funding and now we're not supposed to be doing any more brain health funding. What's different about the dollars coming in the door to the Dream Center? It's all about part of the program. It's all about their mission. You're not changing anything different July first, when the brain health funding has been spent. It's still the same program. It's just, we're looking at a different funding bucket. And that could be problematic. At least it's gonna be a hiccup with the state.
And there's doing a knockout job with helping the. I guess, sort this, sort through all this.
Yep.
At the time, so I'm I'm sure she will continue. But it is gonna get. Confusing.
Right, so if we fund the next step. Does that make the original funding suspicious? Because how could it be for br- brain health funding? Again, this isn't for brain health funding, which our language may need to change our our. Do you have any needs that are not soft needs? Do you have any remaining needs that are capital expenditures to get your program up and running? Your elevators in, is that right?
Yep, yeah.
Thinking about the things that are clearly less brain health related.
Funded two elevators for brain health in the past, so.
No, I understand.
I'm sure where you're going with that.
It's just not with them.
Sure. That's not a concern for me. I think, you know, we can cross that bridge when when we get there. This, these are federal funds. Uh, they're designed to, you know, assist the community. Um, so I I don't, I don't see any challenge in the future. But thank you for your work. I think you're doing great strides. Uh, drive by your place. I saw the new outdoor play area. It looks wonderful. So uh, keep up the good work and we'll we'll see how we can support you.
You're still invited to come shoot those free throws.
I need to do that.
Um, I I do want to say something, though, if if you don't mind about the dilemma we're we're talking about. Just just as a reminder, when we first requested the American Rescue Funds, um, that, you know, we re-requested. Um, you know, nine hundred thousand to to help with our entire budget, which went towards our um. Operations and who we are and our programming. And then, and you gave me a great opportunity with the brain health funding. And and um, we we made it clear that what the Dream Center does, does connect to brain health. So we we were not, or we are not trying to um say to make funding fit where it doesn't for a funding source. For us, it it, we we holistically um serve students in all those areas. And so I just think the funding for both um funding sources relate to who we are and what we do. We shouldn't have to change who we are. It's just, we just emphasize brain health more. Um, because that was the focus of that funding, but we we were confident that that fit us, and it does. But then this is summer reading, you know, the the initiatives about summer reading and and helping families, working families also. That that have, that have needs and and need us to serve their kids. It it it's, it's, it's a separate focus of what we do, but they all are intertwined. And so that's what I would, that's what I would say there. And I and I'd be more than um willing to speak with anyone if we need to clear something up. But it just seems to make sense to me when I look at the history of, okay, there was American Rescue Funds that was halted. The brain health came up, and now we don't need nine hundred thousand. We just need the remainder of what our original request was.
So the summer program. I would agree that the reading program is distinctive, because it adds, it's actually the same program, it's just a different time of the year, but all the same. And I've seen your summer program. Some years ago, I was down there. It is, it is, it, your pictures are true. I've been in your building. It's true. Kids are learning, they're reading, they're sitting in desks. That's not. That that's not a walk off the basketball court and just pretend. It's, you know, I I've seen that, so.
Thank you.
But I will um, I will have to sort through and and work to get that question answered, so that we. So that we can do this well, and maybe there'll be a grant for summer, and then we'll have to look at. How we fit this together with whatever the new region becomes, maybe.
Yeah, part of it is brain health, the other part of it is the reading and math programs. I mean, there's separate, you can separate those out easy enough. I'm not concerned with, I think you're doing a knockout job, and I hope you keep going forward with it, Robert.
Thank you all so much. Uh, we really mean it. We really appreciate it.
Glad you came back and didn't just say it's four hundred thousand dollars and that's it. I'm glad you're back here again, stressing that you continue to have need. I appreciate that.
No problem. I'll come back again if you want.
Purchase of services and applications as well, so.
Sounds awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Moving forward to our eleven o'clock work session. Human Resources Update.
Yeah, if you if you don't mind. Um, good afternoon. Hopefully, I'll be brief. I know we're running considerably long.
This is kind of an important thing. You sent out a memo that said we have a whole bunch of high priority within sixty days. So don't rush.
Okay, so I did identify, I have gone through our administrative policies. And also identified some that we currently do not have. Um, I put them in a three priority status, a high, medium, and low. Um, the high ones, I, in my memo, I had um indicated that I would like to have those fully reviewed. Um, in the next sixty days. Some of those are are currently um in process now. Um, our anti-harassment policy has been reviewed by legal counsel. Um, and that counsel um was identified through ICAP, who are our liability insurer. They have a contract with them, and so we utilize them um to review that. Um, County Attorney May was able to also review that over the weekend, so we touched base this morning about continuing to. To move that policy along. So with all of those, um, I did, with some of the low priority ones. Um, I did indicate in here, some of them have been updated. I still would like to have a review of it, but I'm not anticipating any major um significant changes to those as well. Um, and then there are other ones that have not been reviewed, um, but I have not, I have yet to identify any major changes to them. But again, want to have everybody review those. Um, so this was step one. The next step, as we, as we go and update them, we'll have legal um look through those. Then we will also review those with our department heads, um, and elected officials. Um, that's been our our practice, and we've received very good feedback in the past regarding that process. Um, and then one of the last steps is identifying any training associated with these. Um, some of the, some of the policies may not need any training. It just may be a communication. But there are definitely some that I'm starting to identify of even bringing in outside trainers into that. Um, we've learned with some of our recent um employee safety awareness training that we've done for our management staff. That we do need to offer multiple um training options. Um, we did Zoom, we did in-person, and we also recorded it. So um, we have management staff that work on a twenty-four-seven shift, um, and some, you know, a third shift. And so um, that has been beneficial, so um, that, I think that is probably even more crucial than. Um, the other parts of it is making sure that our our management and frontline staff are um. Are aware of the changes, are, understand the policies and the procedures within those policies. And feel comfortable knowing where they can get additional information. So um, do you have specific questions on on any of the specific policies that we have in here?
I asked for copies of the policies. Is that?
I can, I will get those for you, yes.
I mean, certainly, the the, several of the low level ones I've worked on in my term. But um, some I haven't. They predate me, but the high level, um, I mean, I'd like, I would like to see those.
I will get those.
We're starting.
I did.
Yeah. And, you know, equal opportunity, when the first one up there, high level. We're hoping to hire a consultant to help us with uh DEI, right?
Correct.
Is that something that you expect that that individual's gonna look at with us?
Absolutely, and we did go out for our fee for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Consultant. Um, that um closed on Friday, and I believe we have five um proposals that were sent in. So I was happy to to see that um participation and that interest in our uh, in our community, so.
That listed as one of the the achievable's or is that something they're going to do for us?
Yep.
To look at that?
Yep, we looked at um for policy, for identifying training and for um, just to, they're firstly gonna come in and just do an overall analysis. Of our current state, help us get to um a mission and some goals with that as well. That was all part of the scope of um work for the consultant.
So when, when would be a good time for us to check back with you about these high-level uh HR policies that need to be addressed?
I would say within two weeks, we may even have policies ready to present in front of you. Um, like I said, we have some that are quickly moving through. Um, one is, another one that's is important is the drug and alcohol testing. That is, again, federal law, because we do, um, anybody who holds a CDL, um, they are legally required to be entered into a random drug and alcohol. Testing. Um, that policy is currently being reviewed by CJ Cooper. They are um the consortium that we contract with to perform those um testing along with um tri-state occupational house. So they're kind of our subject matter experts in that, so that's being, that's moving forward as well. Um, we'll need to go through legal, but I I feel good that CJ Cooper um and their team are looking at it currently. So I would say within two weeks, um, another check-in would be great, would be appropriate.
So we'll have a another work session?
Looking at the date. That would be an evening one. That would be up if you want that, or if you want just an update on the eighteenth, or go into May then.
You could just do an update on the twenty-fifth.
It's an evening meeting. I I I know that we had, but I can even just put it as, um, you, like I said, you may have a resolution in front of you by then. For some of these policies, so that would give um an opening for for comment.
Things that would be helpful, maybe why we're going over this, is to also get some, you know, context of our employee base. So sheer numbers, full-time, part-time, and then kind of the big categories, certainly some grass. Courthouse operations, Sheriff Department, Road and Bridge, just to see kind of the breakdown in the numbers, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll provide that to you.
If you, it's not too much work, and if you have that over the last four years or so in the past. Maybe think of it as uh, the city of, for example, is proposing to add twenty-two full-time employees or something like that. And we we normally don't have that level of increase, but I guess I don't know what the actual number has been over the last series of years.
I think it's, it's, since I've been here, it's been fairly steady with the the full-time, but I know that our part-time we've increased, but I will, we'll take a snapshot.
Not a high priority, but something I think would 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 help, uh, why we're doing these policies. It's for the employees, not necessarily for a checkbox.
Absolutely.
More things. So Dawn, I would appreciate also, um, if you could please add me at least onto the list of recipients. For any administrative notices you're sending out to employees.
Okay.
Um, we, at least, I still feel very much on the outside of not receiving the information.
Okay.
That you're sending. I I don't know how to get myself on that email list, but I would like to be there.
I will, I will, I would copy all supervisors on it. Um, we do uh discuss these during our department head elected official meetings. Um, so I can, I know you've participated in the past with some of those. Uh, but I won't, I send them out usually days in advance, so they're able to review them.
And those I don't, I don't get them, send them out a day.
I'll copy all of you on that, so you can see the work in progress.
And then we're talking about HR policies and such, and um, I'm gonna ask you again about reviews. So if we uh look at all this, it's not listed there because it's not an administrative policy. We don't have a policy about reviews.
Are you talking about performance in a performance review? That is correct. We currently do not have a system in place for um. For official performance reviews.
So I would add that as a high level that we need to, when you're talking to folks, we need to address that as well. Um, I'm, I am not suggesting that you will be evaluating the auditor staff. But I do think that we should be discussing reviews. There's never been one that I'm aware of. In my more than three years as a member of the board. So, and I I hear you, colleague, that you can't do it if you're not gonna do it right and and on. But but I would like to be, at least, we need to be high-level thinking about it. Some things that occur can be addressed. But, but I would like to be at least, we need to be high level thinking about it. Some things that occur can be addressed with a review discussion, performance discussion.
And I will, I, I will put that on our department head and elected official agenda to begin those discussions. I've, I've had individual conversations throughout the last couple of years, the pros and the cons regarding it, but I think it's time for to, to get everyone together and, and see if we have support, get support, build support for annual performance review program.
But I'm asking you as a professional, I mean, I don't know of one professional in HR who's ever told me performance reviews are a bad idea.
I think.
It's the standard.
Yep. I think it is about training your management team and how they do them. I, I agree with, I, I've had situations in the past, not with here, but where somebody just did a performance review to check the boxes and, and really weren't giving a fair assessment of the employee's performance and it, and it has come back to negatively impacted employment, uh, future employment action that we were gonna take. So it's really about making sure management is doing those correctly and really reflecting the, the performance.
And it also is performance reviews by the Board of Supervisors of the people who report to us.
Oh, that would absolutely be included. It would be everybody.
So I'm asking that that begin at that level as well.
Okay.
I appreciate the work, the lot of it before us, but. Good stuff.
That's what we're here for. Thank you.
Just for five minutes.
Okay.
Motion and a second to recess for five minutes. All in favor signify by aye. Recession until 12:35. Well, the Board of Supervisors back in the session. Moving along with their work sessions, work session with facilities superintendent, discuss the court out courthouse. Gardens, Chris.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Last year when we were doing the renovations in the county recorder's office, we had some issues with water coming through, actually physically seeping through the wall. Uh, we did a little exploratory dig and realized that there was nothing, when the gardens were installed back in the eighties, they did a very minor spray with like a tar, something or other. And the gardens have since then been filled 18 inches or more higher than where they originally at. So we looked at two options, digging it out, trying to reseal, or the best option based on the security requirements and everything for the courthouse is to take the gardens out, excavate them down, reseal the wall, bring them up just below grade, pave it, you know, using stamped concrete, something, some, you know, like the cobblestones outside or match the concrete, the, the kind of the red brick on the building. Put in potted plants and then put in some benches. That would meet all the criteria. It'd keep the water from intruding in the building, cause it's coming through every place. We have an exterior garden. Those are those multiple pictures I sent to you guys. What we would do is all the limestone would be saved. To either use like at the west campus for that, for the landscaping out there or other possible, we'd need some, some corner work on a couple areas around the old historic jail. We'd use it. And then it'd just be a matter of getting it dug out, sealed, backfilled with something that will drain and then put in the concrete. And then at that point, we can put in whatever benches. There's a picture, one of the benches that we would put out there, be bolted down bench and it would be there for people to sit when they're outside. We've already started with the whole potted plant thing, but we, two years ago, three years ago, we went through and had to pull.
Potted plant thing.
The whole potted plant.
I love potted plants and you just call it a thing.
Oh, I'd like plants altogether. The, to me, it's the best thing you could have inside or outside any building.
That's what I was wondering, what's missing in your presentation was the, the plants and the, what we're trying to do. So when I saw the courthouse gardens drawing, I was excited. A little underwhelmed when I click on it, but so that maybe one of the things we can do is what, if we're gonna spend time and energy,
Yes.
what's the final results and what is it gonna look like? At least some sort of rendition or at least a, a plant or two or some sort of.
Well, that part, parcel, we're, we're in the beginning stages. I had budgeted 13 grand just to dig, excavate, excavate them, seal the walls and backfill them to a point where we could reuse, but the, what we're seeing is, is like I said, the gardens keep getting filled back up and it's causing, you know, we had to replace, do major repair work on the walls and a couple of the rooms and a couple of the exterior offices already because of the water intrusion.
So do you feel or think the, is it four or five areas?
Five.
So excavate, pull out cement, 5,000 per area or a little less?
Um, I'm still working. If we do, if we just do a straight concrete core, it's gonna be straightforward, match the outside sidewalk. I don't wanna do that because it kind of takes away from how the exterior to build, the building looks. Stamped concrete runs probably one and then one and a quarter to one and a half times regular poured concrete does. So I'm still working on trying to figure quantities.
These or a mini?
No, they're gonna bring in a mini excavator to do it. We'll have to hand excavate parts of it because we have.
Thousand bucks for sure in each one of them, just to get them.
The 13 grand was to excavate, seal the walls, and then backfill them back to existing height. So we're looking at probably another eight, eight to 10 grand if we're gonna do the concrete and do the stamped concrete to do it. I'm waiting to hear back some prices from a couple of our local concrete guys to see what we can do.
I've never noticed the area and that's probably because there hasn't been much vegetation there.
We, we took it all out three or four years ago to meet the security requirements, cause everything was so overgrown. Shane was losing more hair than he's already lost, worrying about people being behind stuff in front of the building. So this eliminates that, also makes it look better and gives us place, place for people to sit if they're waiting to come into the building or whatever they're doing.
The building looks really good. So I mean, that's the good thing. The building looks really good. I'm actually kind of just debating and thinking about, do we really need or want vegetation around the building? I don't have a strong opinion on it. It's just kind of when the costs keep going up and the issues related to old buildings keep going up and throwing security, maybe the building can stand alone.
I mean, going back with, you know, part of the idea of the potted plants was something that individual departments currently at this time kind of do a little bit in some of their gardens out there. Not as much as they used to. And so the idea of the potted plants would be, they could get their pots or whatever, set them up with whatever flowers or annuals or perennials they wanted to use.
Why do you need to have all the work done if we're gonna do potted plants?
Because we still have to stop the water intrusion and have a place to be able to protect the front of the building, basically is what it comes down to. If we, you know, the.
Do you do this work regardless if there's any plants in there?
Yes.
Just for, okay, so it's not, it's not, okay, so it has nothing to do with the garden and the plants.
No.
We've got a, a water issue as a foundation. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
Even with natural rainwater, not watering any plants.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The gardens create a natural puddle.
Yeah.
Next to the building and there, there's no way for it to get away. So if you put concrete or whatever, you can shed it away from the building naturally, just a, a little bit of an angle.
It's almost like this, like a sin, a window sill or window well. You're just gonna slope that away.
And that's, that's the purpose. It's just, you're, you're, right now, you just got a bunch of puddles.
But you don't want.
It's just not, it can't go anywhere.
You don't want the organic material in there underneath. That's why you wanna fill it with concrete. Okay, I'm getting a better picture now. This is, okay.
You have to dig out, obviously, the mulch.
Yeah. We gotta go down about. We gotta go down about three feet.
Maybe four by four at the biggest.
Oh, no, probably 20 feet by eight.
And 20 by eight is gonna be the largest ones like the.
So you haven't looked, been looking either.
Yeah.
I, I didn't notice them either.
Yeah, they, well, and ever since we pulled all the.
That one is the best looking one, by the way.
County assessors.
I, I remember when they were beautiful.
County assessors took care of that. They did a lot.
Yeah.
When they were here.
That looked more like.
When they first went in and there were signs that said who was caring for them and I remember people caring for them. So it has a history of, they were lovely. It's years ago, but they were very nice.
See, the auditor used to take care of that?
Assessors. Yeah, it's, it's actually the paint's peeling off the wall.
I would, uh, our office would happily do that if they were leaking. I mean, I think it softens the look of the building. I think you can put gardens out there. You could put vegetable plants if you wanted and grow tomatoes.
But the real issue and the real cost is a water issue.
Water issue, correct.
So, yeah, I'm kind of understanding that. So regardless if we ever put a single plant, so what if the board said no plants ever? You'd probably seal these, right?
Yeah, we would still go in, excavate, seal the walls, bring it up to below grade, pour the concrete, so we can get, shed the water away from the building. That's the whole goal.
What if a supervisor said, I wanna grow tomatoes. Anybody can pick and take away.
We'd have to put in, seriously, put in some big pots. You could set pots out there to grow them and that's the way I would, and then it's one of those things that can be removed in the wintertime or in the fall and be put back out whenever. So it's not like we don't have the space to do that out there. You know, those two smaller gardens, we could do something like that. The bigger gardens, we could put a bench and more pots.
About all pots, bring in pots.
Yeah.
Is there any need or necessity to keep the limestone, you know, edge or, and or do you plan to remove that?
We're planning on re, removing the limestone, reusing some of that next door.
And then make it at grade?
Yes.
The whole thing's at grade now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Which is what it originally was before the eighties.
Yeah, somebody put those in there and they're like, hey, let's put these.
Yeah.
Little garden cutouts in or recesses in and then it's leaking.
Thought about the issue with water.
Yeah. And that, and I talked to Rich Bass and he was here when they did it originally and all they did was use basically a thin coat of like a tar spray to.
Are those, do you know how well those are anchored?
Oh, they're basically sitting on grade.
Okay.
The block art.
All right.
They're just butted up against the concrete and sitting on.
Already to get removed, but I bet you're gonna have a few thousand bucks at every site for sure. Many accidents.
Can't you make those grow, make those drain?
No, they're, because of where, where grade is at and where the wall is, they, yeah, we could probably put in.
You'd have to get into the side.
Other things, but at that point in time, it starts.
There's not enough height.
Yeah.
To drain it.
Make them taller.
Then you run into the issue of the ledge and the windows.
Yeah.
You're, you're, they've filled it up over the years where it is right at the, right below the window.
I understand it's getting emptied and we're going back because it's not been, it's not sustainable gardening. I get that, absolutely. But I think we have a difference of what the vision could be for what it might be able to be. I think when we talk about paving the courthouse gardens, I think we wanna explore other things before that's the final.
The biggest issue is, is if we don't do something now, get the wall sealed, bring it back to grade, even then, we're still gonna have issues with water pooling or anything else. We still need a way to be able to get the water away from the building. And that's the single biggest problem we're having. They never had this water problem before they put the gardens in back in the eighties. Never had an issue with it. It's been since they put the gardens in and backfilled them up to above grade that's caused the problems.
But you're now in charge of not filling them above grade.
That's.
We've got somebody on that.
The, the goal, the goal is, is to.
Keep mine grade. You're talking about, you know, those limestones are what, foot and a half?
Probably 18 inches, yeah.
Well, I mean, you, that's, that's, the grade is the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I can see where there's problems. I can see why the water's just draining right towards the building. Unless you had real secure foundation, which 138 years old.
It's a limestone foundation, so.
Yeah, I'm all for making it beautiful and that's where I started. Like what was the vision? I was with you. What's the vision? Show me what this is. Now I see why you're kind of just, your, your presentation was very bland. It's really just about removing those cinder blocks and getting us back to normal, so the water drains away from the building. And then it's a beautification project after that. That's how I see it.
Get some larger pots and plant whatever.
Yeah, that, that was what we're looking at.
I mean, I really support that, but now I think I understand better if that's.
My apologies.
Are we getting drainage issues at every site or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's more, it's worse in the front, because of course the sidewalk, you know, that comes up from, comes up to central this way. So it's worse in the front than it is in two, the two side gardens. We're still getting, uh, getting it coming through at the foundation.
I get it now. Yeah, I would support removing those.
Get an opinion from a landscape person? If I wanted to hire a landscape person to make those gardens usable and keep water away from my foundation, what would they say? That's what I'd like to know.
I brought in two different excavators, mainly because they do basements, they do all the other stuff. And they also got contacted one of the water, local basement waterproofing companies and they all said that, they've all said the same thing. Even if we bring it to grade, we're still gonna have issues with water retention behind there, because water doesn't drain straight down around here very well. Just because of the nature of the ground. So it's gonna sit there and pool and it's eventually gonna keep leaching through the foundation. That's why the recommendations were to cover it, bring it all back to grade or just a touch above grade with an angle. Cover it, make it look nice by using printed concrete or something along those lines. Semi-permeable paving or, or open block. Semi-permeable paving or, or open blocks like they're using the alleyways and stuff here won't work there because there's no place for the water to go.
Going to go through.
It's going to end up coming through the foundation. And that's, you know, my concern is, is, is one, it's the interior walls are getting destroyed and it's ruining the carpet and it's ruining flooring.
Nobody's voting for continued deterioration of the interior walls. Right, so nobody's voting for that and I appreciate that we're going to, we've caught it, we're going to fix it, we're going to maintain it. That's, that's the baseline.
Yes.
But I, I do think that the, that there should be beauty added. It is all concrete all around. Except for the small garden out by the veterans. So be nice if something looked lovely or inviting.
Well, that was part of.
The pavement is that.
That was part of the discussion was to, you know, either match the cobblestones, match the cobblestone design that's on Seventh Street with printed concrete because they can match the dye, they can match the stone shape and everything else. Or match the red brick that's on the entire facade of the building and do the same thing. It would be colored. It would be, wouldn't be bland gray concrete or off color concrete sitting there. So it would have some texture, it would have some color and then we'd be able to put, like I said, big potted plants out there if we choose to do that. Some benches out there for people to sit to make it a little bit more habitable for people that are waiting to come in the courthouse and stuff in good weather. And then, like I said, it eliminates, we're controlling water, it's running away from the building instead of down and into the building.
I would ask about the snow removal on the decorative concrete and such. Snow removal.
Yeah, in reference to what? We sweep everything now and use a small snow blower, so it wouldn't be a whole lot different.
When the city did some of the paving down on Lower Main Street, which is where my company was.
Okay.
They had to get different kinds of sweepers to, to do with the brick that they put in.
We have one.
Yeah, I bought one.
Already doing that.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, just so that we're aware.
Yeah, we bought that just to make it.
He got it for the last snow, two snowstorms ago. It was.
Yeah, it was, it was out. Yeah, it's working great.
Stamped concrete would be necessary, but.
Do you have the brushers? Like they have it growing?
Yeah, it's a big, big brush.
Those are, yeah, they use those at, down in the Millwork District all the time. They, they work really well.
And it protects the gray, whatever is running over, it doesn't destroy it.
Plastic brush that's, you know, wears down over time, but.
I mean, the other option is.
You don't have to clean up after.
I would say we dye the concrete to match either the limestone or to match the red brick. Then that doesn't cause, dyeing concretes is an insignificant amount and it would give us the breakpoint between the, the city sidewalk per se and a sitting area and a garden area.
Talked to a landscape company.
No, I have not talked to a landscape company at all. This was more of a fixing a water leak thing rather than talking about landscaping. I can bring, I can get ahold. I've got a landscaper I'm working with, we're starting to work with for the West Campus. I can have him come take a walk around and give some recommendations.
Is there any other place outs, other than potted plants in your presentation? Is there, do we have a?
There was a, the, there was a, you got a copy of the.
An actual in-ground garden?
No, no.
And I, if you're doing potted plants, I mean, I.
Yeah.
Landscapers, but I don't know if you really need a landscaper to get two or four potted plants in the area. If we're looking to improve the courthouse beauty, I, the parking lot in the back is the ugliest for me.
And then that's, that's.
Courtyard, I'm talking about colleagues, would be wonderful, but let me know when you're interested in that. It could really make a significant difference.
The green space around the back parking lot is one of the projects that we're going to be doing this calendar year.
Oh, the actual, so the just.
Going to clean it up and go through and look at, one of the biggest issues we have is the amount of salt that gets thrown there when we're plowing. So in most things, and you know, you salt the ground to kill everything. So and that's what ends up happening. So we've got a few things growing. I've worked with conservation and I'll be working with so many other folks when we do the West Campus to look at what we can put in there.
That you might need a landscaper for.
Like I said, the biggest issue is plants that we can put in there. And again, we have the same issue as it's way above grade because it's stuff that's been just, plants rotting away and building more ground. So that's all going to have to be excavated too. One project at a time.
Yeah. The water.
Because I usually keep coming in, asking for more money. So I try and keep them one in front, project at a time.
So are you going to talk to a landscaper before you come back and pave, come back to us before we just pave or we paving?
Well, I will talk to a landscaper.
I don't.
I need to get the excavation done.
What is the landscaper going to tell us about, at a contractor that we've already referred to? I'm, I'm confused. Certainly a landscaper for beautification.
Yes.
Plants. This is an excavation issue, right?
Yeah, that's what we're doing. Excavating, resealing the wall, having them go down to, we're going down three to three and a half feet, go back in, reseal the wall behind there, bring it back up.
For these?
What's that?
Would you go out to bid for these projects?
Yeah, I already got quotes because it's under twenty-five K. So I went out, got, got a couple of quotes and we're looking at about thirteen thousand. Well, now it might be a little bit more with concrete prices going a hundred and fifty dollars a yard, but.
I would be ready. If you, you need our, if the board wants to review those, that's what I would be.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Assuming what you're telling me is true and we got water coming in.
We do have water coming in.
Got to solve that. It's going to be raining a lot more in the next six months.
Yep.
Is that where we are? We're going to pave? Is that the final? Is that where you are supervisor Paul?
You're talking stamped concrete, not pavement.
Yeah, I'm not, not paving blocks, not semi-permeable paving. It'll actually be colored concrete that's either have a stamped design to, to meet the cobblestone and stuff or just leave it colored concrete. Yeah.
I want to seal it, so I'm, I'm not particularly interested in all the colors, but I want to.
You can use paper, water will go down through that. And you can use blacktop, so you're either using stamped concrete or just plain concrete.
I'm asking if we've asked someone who, whose mission is to grow things and also not have water through the buildings, if we've asked them for a possible solution? Or have we only talked to people who pour concrete as a solution? No one who pours concrete or stamps concrete or colors concrete is going to tell you that you should put plants in. That's all I'm asking.
What I, the contractors I talk to excavate and build foundations for buildings. They fix basement walls. That's the sort of stuff they do.
Do they plant anything?
No, no. But here's the thing, if we bring it back up, if I try to plant something below grade, we're going to still have water working its way through the walls, okay? If I bring it to above grade, it's going to be even worse because we're going to have to spray tar up to underneath the windows and everything else to seal the wall so moisture doesn't come back in. My primary concern is the moisture intrusion. We can make it look great by changing the color of the concrete or doing something like that. And then bringing somebody in that does landscaping or whatever to look at, how can we put either potted plants or something else out there that's not going to allow water to come into the building?
And I think you can ask someone who's in the planting business to also give you an opinion about the water seepage. I think they, they can also tell you about that, Chris, because there might be a solution that's both. You have bad drainage. The answer to drainage isn't to remove everything, it's to fix the drainage problem.
The only way to do that is to put in crocks like you might have in your basement or in a lower area of your house with a pump in it. So the water would go into there and it'd be pumped out, okay?
Let's be a landscaper's house.
Problems with doing that because in the wintertime, it's not going to work.
Most landscapers don't do that work either.
What's that?
Most landscapers don't do the work you're describing.
No.
So they, they plant it. I'm all for vegetation plants. I love it. You know, I'm, want our whole parking lot to be like that in the back, okay? So I'm very much a proponent of it. If you've got water coming into your foundation, your basement, you need to solve that. This building, we spend millions on this building.
Yes.
You don't want water in your foundation. You want to correct that immediately.
I will get ahold of a landscaper or somebody that does that type of work and have them take a walk through and look at what our options are. But if they're going to say we need to plant a garden out there, I'm going to poo poo it because I'm not going to deal with down the road, have more water coming into the building. I just, I, I fully understand what you're asking supervisor McDonough, but I'm concerned about the foundation of the building and the condition of it in turn, in the internal part of the building with this. We can make it look really nice by just not pouring straight concrete.
Be clear, there's no one here saying water seepage is okay.
Okay.
Right, I mean, heavens, that, that's an obvious, right?
Yes.
So work from that angle, that seepage isn't okay, and then find somebody who might give you an opinion about maintaining the gardens, eliminating seepage. If that doesn't exist, that's fine. That's a perfect solution, but I'd like to at least explore that.
I will talk to the same gentleman that I was working, we started working with for the West Campus and have him come take a look and see what his, what he recommends. But in the short term, I'm, you know, I'm going to, I'm just going to lighten up. We start moving forward with the excavation and stuff. We got to do something and get this water under control. At least get the walls, get it excavated and the walls sealed before we move on to the next step. I'm getting very concerned.
Does that include removing the limestone that's there?
Yeah. The limestone is not going to get thrown away. We're going to reuse some of it here right on site and the rest of it.
I'm sure you're still, but I've heard supervisor Potoff and myself agree with what your, your approach. That's where I'm at.
You got to dig it out either way. You got to get the wall sealed, so get going on that part of it.
All right.
I agree.
I've got that. Like I said, I got that in my budget. I will get ahold of the landscaper that I'm going to be working with, with the West Campus and a couple of the other folks that are involved with that. And we'll take a look out here and just see if there's a viable option or not.
Show up.
Yep, I'll let you, I'll keep everybody posted on that.
Chris, I will show up.
I will keep you posted. Yeah, I'll keep everybody posted as to when they're going to be here. All right.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Excellent work session, discussion, possible action regarding fiscal year twenty-three purchase of service application materials. Ed.
Can't hear you.
Good afternoon, Ed Raiber. So on your agenda again is, I think essentially the same draft document that was present last week. I believe what the supervisors indicated that they were going to do was to consider privately any prioritizations or other additions to the, to the communication to the public about either the kind of projects or the, the, the nature of them. And if you wanted to add any of that language to the document and then with that, if you wanted to release any of that. I sent you a note with just some, a little bit of background on some other things that have been going on, just as food for thought. I don't believe that I've heard back from you, but I'm sure that it's something you've been thinking of. So if there's anything we can respond to you, we're we're anxious to assist you through this.
And three attempts to contact you last week and no, and no contact. So I'm going to ask you for the third time for the summary of the survey that folks wrote in about. Do we have that?
I, I think we do here.
What survey?
This was a survey that the board requested and then I think Stella.
ARPA.
Stella had done that for ARPA last summer.
That was an oral report, correct?
No, there was a. I, I was able to find this here.
And did you send it to me, Ed?
We had like money square.
Yeah, I, I.
But I asked for it last week.
Right, and as I looked for it, I, I believe I, I did email that to at least you. And I was working to get some information from Stella to confirm that. So this is, this is the only document that I'm aware of that was the survey results from that. So it took a little while to, to track that down and I appreciate my colleagues helping me with that. And that is the, this is the survey that was.
Is anyone going to email that to me?
I, I did.
When did you do that?
Probably, I think over the weekend. That's when I, I got it and I was able to confirm some stuff with Stella about that. So I, I apologize, but yes, this was a, this was a previously published report. I also emailed the board some other additional background information regarding other ways that, I'm not sure I would call them priorities, but my understanding is that the way that the board has to categorize applications. You're a little bit like the way we were doing American Rescue Plan. Now they fall into different categories that I think usually the applicants have self-selected. A similar process was used in the past, I believe, for your, what you had called your county grants.
Kevin, are you emailing that to me now? Thank you, if you would.
And it's all three of us.
Did, did it not go, you did not receive that?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. The survey still, are we on the survey or?
Yeah, I'm just going to pull the survey from the previous packet.
Yeah.
Whatever was published.
Three hundred and some.
I'll copy it. Anybody can, in this room though, can do that as well. It's available to all. Public record.
Like it's very colorful. While we're on the requests, can we get a kind of a list here? Can we also get related to purchase of service, maybe the last year or two of the recipients and dollar amounts for those? That would help me. But. That to all of us. And in your email, you did reference Johnson County. Did you find any additional counties and can you give a little context to what you found related to purchase of service? That would be helpful to us, anything?
The, the only counties that, that have a program like this tend to be your colleague metropolitan counties and, and not all of them do it exactly the same way. Johnson and I believe Lynn do something a little bit similar to that and just based on their past history, they may have had some point, as I've talked with a colleague there that at some point they had split that off just based on what they were working on. It used to be one application. And as I said, a couple of years ago, Johnson County actually created a, a slightly different application for a fund that they called their economic development fund. And then they have a human services fund. And they've just developed slightly differently just based on what the supervisors were looking for. So it's, it's certainly something that, that other groups, other, your colleagues have done. Usually that ends up being at the end of a, or is a part of a longer process. So both yes and, and no, and they're kind of open-ended within that. They're fairly broad in terms of what they describe economic development as or is also somewhat broad as they just describe what they're looking for from social services. Thank you. I, I'm unaware of other places that have made a different altercation of, of other things. It's usually those two. But, but really the pool of who does this is, is very small. It's just metro counties and they have their own history of how they came to do something that tries to reflect the same sort of stuff that you're doing.
Just as an FYI for emails, there was a day or a little bit longer last week where occasionally people were having issues being able to send or not send emails where they looked like they went out and they didn't go out. So that may be what has occurred here. That was actually noted by our IT department and has since been corrected. But I had it happen to me too where I sent some emails out and nobody got them. Throwing that out there.
So do you have any suggestions on what we want to do with this or?
I think we talked about a little bit last week on the budget worksheet. The, the source C and D I think is a little wordy and, you know, maybe just call it what it is, don't have an alias. That'd be my other thing, sort of make it more self-explanatory. I know on the bullet items, you have a description somewhere below, but that would be just recommendation, try to make it more understandable. But the rest of it looks good and the questionnaires look good. And the timeframes in there and. And the timeframes in there and.
This is the auditor. Real quick, was this the conversation last week where we asked supervisors to provide us with a couple of priorities?
Right. And I had three contacts and no response. So we are out of time to make changes this year. If you're willing to move forward, I would go. We'll get back to this next year.
I think we need to move forward with it. I know we had talked about maybe some priorities, but it's like we have priorities with the ARP funds already. It's like this is a purchase service. It's a public service. We look at them, which ones that we think make the most sense for a public service and we can approve them, deny them, whatever.
All right, we, I, I think one of our hopes was that if we had a handful of priorities that would drastically narrow down the scope of the applications we got. So we weren't facing another thirty or forty or fifty application process. But if the board should choose to move forward without priorities, I don't know that the four of us can say anything, ask any, ask anything further.
One other comment I did have reading through this, and I didn't find it. Is there anything, this may be for the auditors, is there anything we should have in this application that discusses kind of the auditor's review of purchase of services and kind of, because this was a change that occurred from the state, right? When an email come out and said, hey, you gotta, you know, tighten up the ship, so to speak. Is there any merit to that, Kevin? Just maybe just think about that. If you think that should be in the application.
I don't think it needs to be in the application. I think that when discussing public purpose and, and how we apply tax dollars. You know, the board has some latitude to determine what public purpose is. Again, setting priorities funnels that public purpose even more specific so that we don't run into the issues where we get into gray areas. So, but yeah, I don't think that needs to be included on the application itself. That's more of a mechanism that we'll be looking at here and moving from there.
I guess if you just want some categories, throw some categories out and discuss it quick. Make three or four categories.
Oh. Well, Ned's email to us, we have the categories that were used in previous years, economic development, public health, human services, and then community investment. And was other an actual category too? Okay.
There, there was another category.
If you have other, you, you've got basically all. But, you know, if you would state as an example, if those four were a priority, if you stated, we will give priority to these four areas and/or even remove other, then you would have a structure.
So something new this year that we've not had in the past, we have to find a way to have a category for folks who want to apply for purchase of services for Food Policy Council folks, right? So I want, I got a garden idea, a garden idea. Which, which one is that? Which, which category? How do I know that that's my time? This is my time to step forward. Where's childcare? In these groupings in this language?
Right.
Where's immigration services?
Sorry. So at this point, we haven't done any categorization. So anybody would be eligible to apply for purchase of service for their project. So we have told Food Policy Council to direct any people that would be applying to our purchase of service program that we would be releasing more details about around this time. But I think we would direct any of those people for any of those projects to this program. If the board would like to set some kind of parameters like that, we are happy to assist you however we can.
I, my impression is that when the county in the past has had something where we ask applicants to say, are you applying for economic development or, or other things? It was strictly a way to just kind of get an idea of what kind of applications were being submitted. If they were operating expenses or, or others, but that did not appear to be anything that I think that the board had broken out specific funding for any of those categories. It was just more of an informational way to unders, maybe see what kind of the depth or a different kind of diversity of applications you were receiving. So I don't think that any of the applicants were under the impression that any of those were, and you did receive applications in every single one of categories and you funded applications in all of those categories as well. So I think just from the standpoint that it was a point of passing interest. And I think applicants, my understanding is I've talked with them. It was something that they labored on greatly, wondering to know which box should I check with my application? Does it matter? And that it, it didn't appear that in a lot of the discussion that the board was having or in the way you were making your funding decisions, that it was a critical piece that you were reviewing. But you, you.
Generally agree. And one of the reasons is that a high percentage, at least my memory, the high percentage got funded. So, you know, if you're, if you're going to fund eight out of ten, it's, you know, okay. You don't have to really be prickly on your categories or prioritization. That's in the past. You know, I'm comfortable with the four areas of categorization that we have. And if the board wants to talk about the priorities of those.
What are your priorities again?
We can have at it. The, well, the categorizations that we've used in the past, which I don't think the board ever said these were priorities, but just categorization, if you described it exactly, economic development, public health, human services, community investment. There's an other, but you know, I would. But I mean, I, that, that was kind of receiving the applications. It's like, okay, here's what we funded in the past. Let's categorize them. And I think it's helpful. You go back, you go back the last couple of years and see how much we spent in each one of those categories. You know, I think we randomly we picked a $600,000 number for whatever reason. Our funding has been much higher than that in the past series of years. So we've at least, you know, said to the public, we're going to spend less in this category. That's, you know, so that, that was the first state. But I'm okay having those four areas be part of the application. But I would take out other. Do you still have five then?
Sure. With those four, with those four areas, you're basically saying, everybody come apply for everything. You're not, you're still not giving us a priority. Like, like this year, the board wants to focus on feeding people who have food insecurity. And next year, the board wants to focus on improving our green spaces in the county. And the year after that, the board wants to do X. Those are, I think, the level of priorities that we're looking for that, that severely limit and target a specific need that the supervisors as a whole, or at least a majority feel as though it's a need for the county.
I think we're out of time for that. Whatever board exists after the first of the year, we'll have to get into this. That's what I think. I mean, we got to go forward. We got to get this underway. So whether you choose to add those four, which means everybody in the world or not, we're, I doubt we're going to, we're not spending any more time on this. We need to move forward. Time's over.
It's one statement. We had a chance in American Rescue Funds to do this. And I was saying we should categorize and prioritize, prioritize those fundings. Still think it's a good idea to do it for this. I wish we would have done it for American Rescue Funds, but that's done. We have our applications in front of us.
We did do it. We put out the survey and that's.
We did. And, and and we're talking $600,000.
From the board, not from the public.
We're talking $600,000 here. We're not talking $18 million. I mean, I, I, I have difficulty thinking that we would just blanketly open up a $600,000 purchase of service program to every possible person and group and entity that wants to fund something. Because $600,000, you're going to get 50 applications for things. We're going to have to pour through those. Whereas if you simply said, we want to focus on this this year, that would target where you want to spend your money as a board.
Agreed. There's just been 20 years of history. So that's a, that's a tough valve to shut off.
Just, just because we've always done something that way doesn't mean we shouldn't.
I'm just saying it's a tough valve to shut off and the three up here get to make those decisions. So, you know, these, the investments this board has made in the past, and it's been unanimous on many of them. You know, are putting good use to community money. And I'll back that up on all of those. And so you know, you can do that. And we've done that in 600,000. Last year's budget was what that we spent?
One point five. It's about six or seven.
So that in itself is telling, this board is telling the community that we're not as interested in their applications. So I mean, that's, that's one thing that could certainly be an indicator.
I don't know that I'd say we're not interested in their applications. We just took applications for $60 million worth of stuff.
We're going to spend less money. You're correct. So we can certainly correct on the, in the other category. So that's a good justification. I won't deny that.
Spend the full amount that we allocated last year. We did not spend 1.5 million purchases.
Because of the ARP funds.
Maybe the last two or three years average has been a couple million.
Fine. I think we're, I, I think the document second draft is good to go. If that's where we are. That's where we are today. We got to move. I mean, unless you want to get a consultant in here to start talking about priorities, that seems like a waste of taxpayers' money when two of us are on the ballot. So I think this is as good as, is as good as we're going to get.
I think if we could get it down to like Kevin said, you know, community investment. Okay, that's what we're looking at. And be done with it. If you're going to open it up to all forums, like then there's no sense even having categories because it's going to be open to everybody anyway. So you gotta, you either gonna have to pinpoint it down to one thing and move from there or two things, you know, community investment and other, and just go from there. I don't know.
I agree.
Everything anyway? Community investments, everything anyway. What are we ever going to fund that isn't a community investment?
I just threw that.
I know.
Just.
Just trying to find the word.
If there is a year to pivot, it is this year because we have more funding and more available buckets. You know, we did take one application for American Rescue Funds. So that where you're heading supervisor Potoff to pick one or two only?
I would think, I mean, it's, we're talking 600,000. We're not talking 18 million. You know, it's we want, you know, 200 applications for this. Go ahead, Ed. Sorry.
Another note that I'd make in, I, I did, and I apologize if I, if I let you down supervisor McDonald and not getting back to you, it was a lot of conversation with all these partners and stuff. It was, it was a very hectic week and I apologize. But I, I did sincerely think through the issue that you had presented us with and I communicated with our, my colleagues too, but the correspondence I did send to you, even other ways to potentially think outside that box might not be necessarily what some of your colleague counties have done with economic development or human services, but, but also things. Most of our metro counties have some sort of core center and then other parts of the community, other parts of the county. So you could, you could think about it in terms of other things that aren't even by that, by looking for more applications from, say, the, the, the more rural parts of the county. Or it could be, I think historically, a lot of the funding requests have been for operating assistance. And that's one of the things that I think the auditor has brought to light that that's not a, that's not a path that the state is encouraging us to pursue. And we've, we've backed away from that and it helped organizations that we have been partnering with through different all of these different programs to, to define their, their project differently than just operating expenses. So but sometimes those are different than, say, a capital expenditure where someone was replacing windows in a, in a property like they're doing at the Dire House in Dyersville. That's one of the projects. Hasn't happened yet. It will before the end of the year, I think. But you could just find it in a variety of ways by the kind of project it is or by geography or some other things. And if you don't do that this year, you know, that I think that that's an excellent food for thought as you, as you think about the applications you get and what's going on out there and, and what you'd like to see in the priorities that you hear. We're here to help you through that.
Any further comments?
Do we have another week to take a shot at this? Or is it, is it, or is the board at where I believe supervisor McDonald's last statements were, we just, the document's good, let's go with it?
Well, I think we want to get it out, but I want to get it out right too. I don't want to. I would like to have some direction on it, but my feeling is if you open it up to the four categories, we, it's opened up to everything. So you really didn't narrow it down.
We probably get to 20 to 30 applications at a minimum that we've had in the past. Have we had 25 applications or so?
Yeah, we've always had at least about 30 applications. I think what we never did in the past, when you look at those categories, was weight them in any way. So even if you don't limit the categories, you include them all, but maybe I hate to say put an amount to each, but you know, weight them differently. Could be a, a step in the right direction as well. So food for thought.
All right. I'm a budget guy. I'd be interested in the board is trying to identify those four categories that you want or narrow it down to two or three and then come up with budgets for each one of them next week.
I mean, if you're looking at, well, you got the four, you'd be looking at 75,000 each.
Yeah, I think maybe if you can narrow it down, if you have the four.
Things that have, are getting paid out of that 600 already. Down to about 300.
Oh, we are.
GDDC. That comes out of that 600 also.
Can't hear you, Kevin. Why?
I said, given that that 600,000 is actually $300,000 for this application process, it's even more of a reason to have a very laser focused.
For this budget year, right?
Okay. For, for any budget year. I mean, unless you're going to move some of the things that are coming out of here to a, to an operating budget, like a line item, budget item. You're always, if you, if you're going to set $600,000, you're always going to lose half of that to the things that we're already going to fund, you know?
Your question just, you know, rhetorical question to me just five minutes ago. So I, I guess you're making the assumption that we're always going to do this funding.
Some of those, some of those items are, some of those items that are coming out of there are items that should be line items on a budget. We just didn't get that far.
Greater Development Corporation.
Correct. And I think we had consensus. It's just nothing we, it's just something we never got done this year. I think everybody on.
In future years, you might pull that out of the purchase of services?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would make sense to me.
But I think you will see things like economic development heavily weighted within these categories because we don't have economic development. Departmental structure. So that's our mechanism of funding economic development throughout the county. So the conversation could be, does that belong in purchase of service or does that belong in a different area of our budget?
It all circles back to the fact that we've never had a full conversation about this. We dance to this topic and then we just say, well, that's best we can do. So we're here, we're ready to release purchase of services. Is anybody wanting to cut anything out to make it, I mean, not? So somebody should not apply who's applied in the past?
I just.
I mean, I'd say the community, you know, the community investment piece has been a lot of infrastructure stuff. So it was, you know, Miracle League and Cascade Pool, which all good, all good. You know, so, so that's kind of that piece. It wasn't necessarily a catch-all for everything. And so I, I, I mean, I, that's the magic question. I mean, I think supervisor Potoff is leading to, yes, let's limit this.
I mean, we are, we've had five minute breaks. It's 1:30. I don't see us having a big philosophical discussion.
I'll go back to my question a few minutes ago then. Would we want to do this for another week, meaning next week? And try to come up with those agreed, to agree on either the categories and the prioritization. You have another week. I asked that question and I think your comment was, let's move forward. So I'm still posing that same question.
I would.
And then we can be done for today.
I'd be happy to move it forward with the community investment and say the economic development, the community investment part, like you said, the pool, the splash pad out in Upworth. We funded those things last year. You know, and I think it's a great community, you know, helping these smaller towns get things.
Well, remember you could like, like Ed was mentioning, you could then say rural community development, you know, excluding anybody who would be in a city, for example, if there was something rural or
Outside of, you know, cities populations, ten thousand and under, five thousand and under. I mean, you can put. Things in there to narrow down who you want to be able to apply for this funding. I don't know if that's good or bad, but it definitely tells people and gives them a place to be. And I think that's an important thing here.
I definitely agree with the rural part of it, that, you know, we have one section that's basically county that, you know. We handle county taxes, you know, granted, we give a lot of money to the city, but we need to focus on the county also, the smaller towns. So you could do the community investment for. Local and rural, something like that. Then do the. Economic development, same way. And it'll give you four different. Categories, but two in each, one rural and one, you know, city.
There's never been a food policy grant application from rural area. So we've directed, just trying to think that the people we've said to come here. What will they be? They won't be, they will, will likely, likely not be rural. Those are projects that are usually community gardens and such, sustainability projects inside the city of Dubuque.
The community garden thing is, can be a good thing. Very blunt, I wasn't too impressed with one last year that paid three thousand dollars for a small garden.
There was one granted. Went out of business.
Yeah, it used to say twenty dollar tomatoes. That's what we planted in our backyard.
I think there were more than that.
I mean, I would, I would support your idea of, of rural or small community investment as a, as a carve out. I would support that.
I don't disagree that we should be supporting people in rural and small communities. Is River View going to be able to apply under that exception, Harley? Are they rural and small communities? We've, we have funded River View from out of this pocket of money to the tune of seventy-five thousand dollars for years. Or are they gonna leave human resources to human services in so that they can at least apply? I mean, that's been an operational budget item for them. It's a person's salary. I mean, they, this isn't, not really.
Understand that, but they can't use that money for a person's salary. It must be for public service at that.
I, I would offer, uh, the, the way we have worked with our, our partners, uh, we can't say that it's just general operating assistance. It has to be for some specific thing. So a number of the purchase of service arrangements that we have, uh, through the contracting process has been. Potentially for a person, but to do a specific thing that we've laid out. So we're working to help them to apply for. In the future, a specific thing that an individual would do, but, but it has been to, to reimburse on, on wages. Uh, or, or payroll costs for a specific thing, not just going into the big pot, I guess.
We're purchasing a service.
Yeah, literally.
Literally, that's what we're doing now. We're, in the past, we may not have purchased services.
And it, it, it's worth noting again, all of the people that we have been working with in the purchase of service program have been very accommodating to, to. Adjust and, and, and work with us on that. So there has been, I'm not aware of any pushback. It's been very, I've enjoyed working with.
In other words, you might as well just leave it open because we might cut somebody out that got funding last year that didn't apply or didn't. Come into the sections is what you're saying, right? That's what you're just saying about. River View Center because it doesn't really apply into one of these. Well, if we're worried about that, then leave it open. Because we don't want to cut them out if.
If they apply and they don't fit, are you gonna say no, you don't fit? I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a way forward based on how we operate, we three, and, and we aren't likely not to say. Well, you don't fit one of these categories, so we're not gonna, so your application is denied?
Well, that's kind of the way it was pointed to start is that we have to have focus on certain things. I said, I didn't want that to leave it open, but you're the one that said you wanted to focus more on certain things. Well, then you're cutting people out. If you're focusing on one or two sections, you're.
I suggested language that was focusing on priorities such as the following.
But if you're looking at priorities, some people are not going to fall into your priorities that we funded previously.
No, not, it depends upon how you write the sentence, actually.
I think just move ahead with the four. Categories and whatever we get, we get, we'll just have to go through them and decide. Gonna get funded, who's not?
You'd like the four categories on the application?
I guess, yeah.
Comfortable with that.
I'd like one category on there for rural. Outside of the city limits, county.
Category or is that just sort of encouraging rural applicants?
Geographical category, right? I would support that. It's not necessarily, these aren't priorities, these are categories. So then eight categories or four categories that are for everybody and then four that are for rural?
Apparently, is it rural or is it unincorporated areas? Is it outside the city?
I was just talking rural or your smaller towns, your ball town, Cheryl.
So outside the city of Dubuque. Outside the city of Dubuque.
Right.
That would be, that would be my definition as well. I didn't mean to.
Does it include Asbury? Does it include Asbury?
That's outside the city?
It's really not rural. It's just outside the city of Dubuque.
Clear on the definition of that? So it's. Small communities and rural areas. That's, that's what I've heard. Another description of that. I mean. I mean, reality is, is every. Hopefully out of twenty-one, all twenty, I think they are small compared to the city Dubuque in population because. I mean, the, the reality here is that you guys took a program where you would allocate one point five million dollars in the past. And you said, we're only gonna do six hundred thousand. So before you come up with categories, before you come up with priorities, you've already told people no. You've already told people that you're not going to be funding them. So I feel as though this is just a little bit of a manufactured crisis. That the board makes X and Y decision and then complains about Z because it's happening based on the decisions they previously made. And that's my piece here, but a, a lot of this conversation here just seems to be circular in nature. These are issues that the board has created. And now when the board tries to fix them, we don't get the direction that we need. I, I don't, there shouldn't be any surprise that you're gonna have to say no to people this year because you have cut the funding by about a third almost. And half of that is already spoken for, for items that probably should be line item budgets. That I think all three of you agreed on, but somehow did not get done. Because of one reason or another. It's, it's, it's nuts. So I'm, I'm just not quite sure what's happening here.
Certainly take a little bit of offense at the fact that it's nuts. It's, it's, it is. Three supervisors without an overriding mission statement or goal processing. We've, we've never done that. We also, if I might, we are also coming out of a pandemic. We are also attempting to administrate unprecedented funds faced with unprecedented needs. So we're doing our best. And I don't think it's crazy and I don't think that it's nuts or anything. It's, it's our best work product. And we have to do it all in the public arena, all of it. So, you know, it's, it's. We give a hundred percent and that we can't quite today in twenty now, twenty-five minutes, agree upon what it means. That's okay. Then. Then move forward with, there's nothing wrong with the document you've presented. We're probably not gonna get to major priorities. You want to use the four that. That supervisor Potoff has suggested and supervisor Wickham is comfortable with and I don't oppose, use those.
So those are the, those are the four plus the rural, small city thing.
In the, the draft, I, I, I wasn't updating a, an end date, but when I initially had drafted that, I had picked a date that was about four weeks after. After you would mind have approved that and I would suggest that again, that, uh, I think it's, um. I'm looking at a calendar here.
You've got April twenty-fifth as the due date.
Right, but that was, that, that, that was because I, I had presented this a couple of weeks ago. Right. So I would, I'm just saying that, uh, you're looking at the calendar there supervisor.
You might be thinking.
Of four weeks from about now and in a, in a.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Yeah.
Okay.
You have a direction.
I, we do. Thank you.
I just have one more question. Do you want this application released this week or do you want it back in front of you next week?
I'm good to have it released unless the colleagues want to see it again. In?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the changes we made. Change the DN date and then those categories. And then if you can, make it more. I'll, I'll try to think of something besides source D. I'll. Yeah, source D, whatever. But that's not a, that's not a critical thing. The rest of it looks good, reads well.
Thank you.
The only thing we have left is board commissions and supervisors' updates.
I only have one question. What happened at the UCC on Friday? I wasn't able to attend.
I was not on the UCC Friday. I was. At a meeting.
At the UCC on Friday, I, I believe, uh, uh. Auditor DeGrotto and I were on there. I don't know if, I can't, a syllabus as well. The speculation, uh, uh, that consumed the, the time that we had. Was about what was going to happen in the rest of the session. And I think it was clear that it was more up in the air than. A typical year. So some bills, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about the proposed. Weight limit bill that has been proposed by Representative Hine out of Monticello and Senator Zumbak out of Delaware County. And what that was looking like and if the likelihood of anything actually happening with that. Um, I forwarded to you this morning, uh, some correspondence that the county engineer had, uh, sent to them. Uh, the County Engineers Association has, uh, I don't know that they've taken a lobbying stance, but from an association stance. Has not been very excited about, uh, that. I believe that the. Gary Grant, uh, one of our lobbyists from the UCC had, uh, provided a little bit of clarity in that. The, 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 the be under the bonnet, so to speak. That's not a fair characterization, but to be under the bonnet of the legislature was someone, uh, uh. A trucking firm, an ag trucking firm that is, uh, taking, uh, grain or product from one county into another county. Hypothetically, like taking it from Delaware County into Lynn County to, uh, ADM or something like that. That if they had the permit to carry that load in one county, but not in the other, um, they could be in violation and that. That is the sort of cross county line sticking point that was the impetus for the bill in the first place. And, uh, if it does not pass, the guidance that, uh, I think. Your colleagues and our lobbyists were saying was that if this does not pass, what will be important is solving that issue. Amongst ourselves between the counties. Uh, this morning, after receiving Anthony's, uh, correspondence, I forwarded that on to you. You may not have had a chance to look at that. That was really this morning that I got that from Anthony, as well as some correspondence from one of the leaders of the Engineering Association that, uh, he had. Had circled themselves into that I provided on to you.
One other, uh, update, uh, the ATV bill that is currently still in the unfinished pile. The, it appears as though it may not get any traction just because of disagreements between the House and the Senate. Uh, which means the county of Dubuque does have a ATV ordinance that sunsets on June thirtieth of this year. So we will want to make sure that as time gets closer, we're not. Getting ourselves into a position where the state hasn't acted and we don't have an ordinance in place.
Is there an update from the UCC on the ATV bill?
That it's simply an unfinished business and they see no movement at all.
It's still possible.
Absolutely, but, but they're not sure that there's gonna be movement on it, so.
They're much more cautious about saying that this bill was dead because, uh, that, this is a, a year in which. Things have popped up in a way that, uh, is unusual, but, uh. It could happen. The, uh, lastly, there was a discussion. But no formal plans about the, the bill that, uh, uh, reallocated local option sales tax. And although, uh, again, knock on wood, that bill also appears to not be moving forward because of disagreements between the GOP controlled House and the Senate. That, um, if, in the event that it does not, uh, uh, this is another issue that. Um, I don't think there's a perception that it's gonna go away. And so there was the beginning of some conversations. Nothing was determined, but, but that, uh, that UCC counties should, um, continue, uh, even after the legislature. Let each session closes to meet, to develop us a plan for over the summer of working with colleague. Organizations and counties about how we will try to present. A more united front to the legislature on that issue.
And then Chair Potoff, one thing you've asked about, uh, no movement on the home base business bill.
On the home base business, I would appreciate it if we could. Not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it, other than I would like to see there be a work session. Or some information provided to supervisors about the, it, it, it certainly seems that there's a local connection to this. And I wonder if we can't find a solution locally, um, without being at the, at the State House waiting for someone else to decide our destiny.
I too thought there was a real local connection potentially to the bill, but I believe actually there is a representative from Dickinson County. Uh, John Wills, I've known Representative Wills for a number of years, but in, it's part of the Lake District and there's a lot of home based businesses in the, in the Lake District. And actually, I, I think that a lot of the impetus for the, the action on that came from that Lake District area.
I know supervisor Potoff asks about it every week, so it would be nice if there was an opportunity for us to, if there's something we can do.
Case here. That's why I just trying to figure it out.
So, you know, you could maybe discuss that offline and if there's space for work session or something.
They had a local FEMA meeting Tuesday. On the railroad crossing listening session on Wednesday. I don't know.
Chandler told me that it wasn't important to be there, uh, that it was different than that. That railroad listening, I talked to Anthony about it later in the week. Um, we probably missed our opportunity to give input to be helpful to the city.
They have six hundred million in grants that they're putting out for railroad crossing.
We missed a meeting the week before. Um, Anthony wasn't able to go and Ed wasn't able to go. And so there was a meeting directly with Dubuque County, Dubuque City and some other local folks. So I think it's gonna come up at DMATs.
Okay. I said on that as a. On meeting and I had a DRA meeting, uh, Thursday night and Friday down in, uh, Coralville.
What's in your report? Will she have questions for me?
Like one other report on the East Central Region. I told you that we were returning five point nine million dollars. Oh, oops. Somebody made a mistake. It's not five point nine. They don't know how much it is. Maybe it's one million. Kind of a big oops. So, uh, we're all waiting to see. Yeah. So I'll send you those emails. So. I don't think, I don't know. Hope somebody figures it out soon.
Nice. There's nothing else. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
That a motion of second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.